Yeah, I think that's all. The calendar year gets approved and it's based on the needs of our students.
I'm curious because I thought each school district had like 180 days or whatever.
Right. Yeah. All right, we'll ask.
What kind of, is the water good, bad, not too good up here? What is it?
It's good. It's excellent.
Excellent. It's cold.
Or who experienced the tragedy in Texas at Robb Elementary during our moment of silence.
Board, I need us to approve our agenda tonight.
I need approval for tonight's agenda. Motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, the agenda has been approved. Want to take a minute for some recognitions tonight, Dr. Arnold?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to start tonight with the group that I mentioned at our last meeting. They are, they are back from the national tournament and we would like to ask the Central Elementary Archery Team to come join me along with their coach, Mr. Thompson, if y'all will come up here. Okay. Is that it? Okay. So, we would like to recognize the Central Elementary School Archery Team, the 2022 Virginia National Archery and School Program State Champions, with Austin Henley taking the elementary male state champion title. This group of fourth and fifth graders are led by their coach, Mr. Jeremy Thompson, who will join me in one second, and several other volunteers. Last month, this team participated in the national competition, which was while they weren't here last month. That was held in Louisville, Kentucky, and they placed 44th in Eastern Nationals and ranked 46th out of 137 teams nationally. This is the highest rank that CBS has ever achieved at the national level. We're very proud of them, the representatives of Amherst County. We want to thank Mr. Thompson and the volunteers that spent many, many hours helping these folks be as successful as they have been. So, after Mr. Thompson speaks, guys, Mr. Rossi has a few things that he would like to present to you. And so, you guys just stay up here for a little bit because I know your parents would want to take some pictures of you as well. But I would like to offer all of you congratulations on a great play.
And this is 21 out of the 25 students, a much better turnout than I thought we might have for the first day of the summer break for them. Madam Chair, members of the school board, I wanted to say how blessed I have been to be able to coach such a wonderful group of children for the past five months. In a year that desperately needed some normalcy in our lives, we were able to restart this wonderful program. I've seen it change lives in the past, and this year was certainly no exception. The work that these kids put into the year, along with the support from their parents and administration, seemed to renew energy into all of our lives. And I couldn't have done it without the help of everyone involved. Coach Joe was not able to make it tonight. We do have Ms. Erica Maddox and Ashley Burdette in the back who were there right along with me, helping the kids, encouraging them, and building relationships, which saw the biggest change. I couldn't have asked for a better group of students to represent our school, this program, and the great sport of archery. And I'm excited to see what the next several years hold for all of us. Thank you.
While we're getting in line for pictures, congratulations, students. You're being recognized here tonight, and also some local business has recognized you also. Quality Archery Design is a member of the community business here. They manufacture locally and they're watching you guys. And we're going to keep the program going with possible sponsorship coming up in the future from Quality Archery Design. Thank you. Congratulations.
The only thing I can appreciate is the time.
So, I have one more recognition I would like to make, as is our custom when we hire a new principal at a school. I'd like to bring them forward to introduce them to you. So, where did she go? There she is. This is Dr. Amanda Cassisi. She is the new principal at Amherst Elementary School. She earned both bachelor's degree in psychology, master's in elementary education from the University of Virginia, and she earned her doctorate degree in educational leadership from the University of Lynchburg in 2020. Dr. Cassisi has spent the entirety of her career with Amherst County Public Schools and has served in several different capacities during her tenure. Dr. Cassisi served as a teacher from 2002 to 2020 at Pleasant View Elementary School, Manellis and Middle School, and Amalon Elementary. She had the opportunity to serve as interim assistant principal at Amalon from January of 2020 to June, and as an elementary administrative leave for the school during the 2021 school year. Dr. Cassisi currently serves as the virtual learning specialist for the division and has been in that role since August of '21. I'd like to welcome and introduce Dr. Amanda Cassisi.
I just wanted to say it's truly an honor to continue to serve in Amherst County. As Dr. Arnold had mentioned, I've had many different roles and I consider myself blessed to be able to continue to serve our students and families. So, thank you.
I would like to just continue the celebrations, and I want to take a moment. We have some focus that are going to be leaving us. Natalia, can you come up with and stand with me, please? You have served us so faithfully here on the school board. And, you know, you're going to be leaving us and going to bigger and better things and serving our students one-on-one and really getting in where the rubber meets the road. So, thank you for the service you've provided here. You've always been so kind and gracious and just right there, you're like, you know, the Energizer Bunny, even when I do it like at 11 o'clock at night. So, anyway, thank you for that, and I appreciate the things that you're going to be doing for us in the future. So, the board is going to miss you, and we greatly appreciate you, and just want to give you just a little bit of a part.
We want to continue. We are here tonight to honor Dr. Arnold and the time and the service that he has provided us here as superintendent of Amherst County. Dr. Arnold has dedicated his entire adult life to the education of students. He graduated from the University of Virginia in 1993 with a bachelor's degree in foreign affairs. Started his educational journey that same year, I believe, and that was with Campbell County Schools. His experience reached every aspect of public education, except maybe bus driver. But I'm sure if I ask you, there's a story there as well. I figured, okay. But Dr. Arnold has touched countless lives of students throughout his work as a teacher and a coach, an administrative assistant, an assistant principal, a principal, an assistant superintendent. And finally, in 2019, you were named superintendent of Amherst County Schools. And you have been here for the past four years with us. Dr. Arnold, you have worked tirelessly for our division. I remember the winter fest that was held at Amherst Medical Center, and it brought over 600 of our families in our community together that night. I remember the music, the students that were playing, the booths that were set up, the community just communicating with the staff from the school, the small children having some fun activities. And it was sort of late at night, but it was just such a, it was cold, but it was such a warm, warm event inside. And I had not been, ever been part of something like that. That was a great way to just start and get our schools and our community connected. It was a rewarding night. It was definitely a moment that allowed our schools to connect in a new way with our community. Dr. Arnold, you've been essential in bringing early childhood providers across our region together, building that program so that the students come to us much more ready and well-prepared and supported. One of the goals I remember that the board gave you when you came was to build a better program for communicating with our families and the public. And, Dr. Arnold, you responded immediately by broadening the social media presence, our digital forms of communication. And today, I think we have almost instantaneous communication. Something happens. Messages, the emails come. So, I think there has just been a great stride in that here while you have been working with us. You know, you've brought a broad array of social media venues, and our community is responding to them. So, I just thank you for that. Through your tenure here with us in Amherst County Schools, Dr. Arnold, you have always made the most of every opportunity. Under your leadership, your dedicated staff, you helped us navigate through the tumultuous pandemic and used innovative learning platforms and schedules to keep students learning while others in Virginia didn't have that privilege. You also helped lead your staff to meet our division needs. You fed us and you gave us distribution for vaccines. In so many ways, you brought technology and extended that and broadened that in our communities. There are many other things that I can say about Dr. Arnold's work here with us in Amherst County Schools, but time is short. I do want to take this opportunity to thank you, Dr. Arnold, for the positive things you've contributed to our educational community and to wish you the very best as you seek new adventures in your years of retirement. I know you, and I know you will continue to serve students everywhere and communities everywhere because I know you're passionate for learning and I know you're passionate for kids. We thank you for your service here and we wish you well in your endeavors.
Thank you.
I believe the board members would like to just say a few words.
Dr. Arnold, would like to say thank you, especially for our wonderful time during COVID. I mean, you had, you had a plan for COVID before COVID existed. I listened to my wife talk about preparations at Ealen, and she was asking, why is this happening? And why, what's going on? There's something going on. And I said, they're preparing for something. Don't know what it is, but they're preparing for something. And, and you were spot on. It occurred, just like we, we were afraid it would, but we weren't behind the eight ball. A lot of other school systems were looking to Amherst to see what we were doing. And that came from, from you guiding the ship. Thank you very much. And you made a way for a lot of things to happen with, with COVID. So, all we can do is wish you best in your, your next endeavors and good luck to you. Thank you.
Am I next?
Yes.
Well, so many great things have been said, and I just want to echo those. Dr. Arnold, I want to thank you for letting me be chairperson under your regime. It was my first time, and I hope I didn't do too bad. We helped each other, and then I tried it another year, and we helped each other. So, one thing I learned, I learned something from every superintendent that stays with me. And you kept saying this to me all the time. You said, I am here for the kids. Every conversation we had, you said, I'm here for the kids. And I will never forget that. When I was on the committee to choose you as superintendent, I knew that you brought great ideas to Amherst. You told us all the innovative things you wanted to do. You kind of turned the world in Amherst upside down real quick to positiveness. And so, my, having children in the system, grandchildren in the system, I want to thank you for that innovative touch that you had. When you said you wanted to retire, I wouldn't listen to you. You kept calling, and I said, I don't want to hear it. And he said, we're going to have to have this conversation one day, and I said, no, we're not. But when I was in the car with you coming from Williamsburg, I couldn't jump out of the car on 29. So, so I had to. He said, we're going to have this conversation. I said, well, I looked at the door lock and I thought, okay. But anyway, after you said what you needed to do and what your future had to be for you, I said, okay, whatever. But we, we came through some storms together, and all of us did. But you, you at the helm and me as your chair, we took on some things. And I would always call you on Thursday night and say, I would text him, and I'd say, you okay? Didn't I? And you say, I am fine. And I said, well, I'm not. I'm going to bed. But anyway. Some of the greatest memories, you came down to my church to help give out food on the buses when it first started with food on the buses when it first started with that. You and Dr. Wells came to a picnic there, met my community there. My pastor sends his love to you, and my family. My children knew you before I knew you. My son was at Russburg, so they too send love to you. I never will forget, we sat here over there somewhere when we were here to meet with the Board of Supervisors. And I remember saying to our colleague, and I said, "What are we going to do? Everybody's mad at us." I said, "I have 25 questions here that you're supposed to answer, you're supposed to answer." And he said, "Ms. Ligon, we're just going to tell the truth." And I sat beside you, and we, people were yelling and screaming, but you were calm, and you helped me to be calm. So, I learned how to deal with conflict through you. Then, when the equity situation come up, we're just telling the truth. I said, "Dr. Arnold, what are we going to do?" And he said, "Ms. Ligon, we're just going to tell the truth." So, thank you for teaching me that, and I'm not going to get emotional, but just thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to thank you for putting up with me for my first term and my big learning curve, and also, when I look back on being on the board and having you here, I think the biggest highlight was how you handled COVID, how you kept our schools open, kept our kids moving forward, educated, being fed, while other schools were failing at that, and you made it on Fox News. I was excited. So, just your whole COVID plan, second to none. You put Amherst County on the map, and we'll always be grateful for that. Thank you so much.
Dr. Arnold, our experience has been very limited, but I have appreciated that even though we might have been on different perspectives sometimes, that you really tried to dialogue with me, and I felt like you tried to give me the benefit of the doubt, and I appreciated that you were doing what you believed completely was best for the kids, and that is a true value to respect. Thank you.
Dr. Arnold, I'm new to the board. I wish I would have been here a little bit sooner to get to know you. We had a conversation before, and, and you were right, I don't know you very well, and I haven't had that opportunity, but the time I have had here on the school board, much respect, absolutely. The, the stories that I've heard, I don't have great stories to tell because I haven't been here long enough, but the stories I have heard from the veterans that have been here, been in the trenches with you, you've always been there to lead, and you've always put the kids first. And yes, COVID was a very, very challenging time, and you took that challenge head-on. You didn't run away from it. You were there, and that's what Amherst needs, and I hope that we continue to move forward in that shadow. And I want to thank you. Thank you for who you are and move forward. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Arnold, I want to just say one more time, thank you, and wish you the best in your retirement, and thank you for your time here and your service. Now, I do think that there's been something prepared for you. Do you want him to sit back down? Okay.
Before we, but when we go out there to recess, and you look at that picture on the table, that was just four years ago. I want, I want y'all to realize what y'all have done to me.
That's what I said.
A leader is someone who encourages them to do their best.
A good leader lets everyone play. When they want to put their heart, make big, or big, and big, and big.
You have somebody you have to help you do stuff.
Leader does things. Leader, everyone, they're like, everyone.
Well, aren't you a someone, you're a someone that will do, will do.
A student.
It's something, it's something where all the other people follow that.
Superintendent is the person who works out for all the students and the students.
Dr. Arnold.
A superintendent is a person, likes working person, who likes working with kids.
Dr. Arnold is smarter, has a lot of heart, has a lot of.
Um, a team player, a team player.
Something wrong.
He's, he's kind, he's a good man, he's my friend, and, and I've known him in time, and he's a good, he's a good guy.
The mayor came, the county comes here to, he did there to lead the division.
He got a mission, straight to the mission.
All the administration, they called him the, the new superintendent.
What is he about? What will he, will he?
He's other community, other community.
Said no matter, he said no matter what, best for students, best for students. He's making decisions, always making, remarkable prudence, remarkable prudence.
He's a big, and his application is high.
He always is, always goes by, send the light.
Moving forward, he spearheaded a conference, presented, presented it to the community before COVID began.
Advocating passengers who were passing, helping to save their lives.
Now, of course, came, now of course, hands to them, and it was all, what we was all.
He did not second everyone, second every, he decided we were on WCT, on WCT.
So, when, and we were going to have students at home for an extended period of time, one of the advantages of that division was as a school division, trying to figure out we were going to, to teach them from a distance. See, if you don't have the ability to, the ability to those students, you know, be faced with those, faced, the, the next best option, the next best is online, all right? So, all right, through a learning management system, management for Zoom, Zoom, those kinds of things. But, but the role, much of our, our internet capability is, and so, and so, we, we estimate have about 30, we have about our 5% of our students that high speed, not have high speed internet. So, it made me start thinking, start rethink, why don't, why Marshall E., or, or, you might not have internet, but most TV, what we're, what we're thinking now is, is that we're now able to fill some space in the summer when school is technically over.
It did not stop there. He said, "Our students must have connectivity." At one hot spots, one hot buses, so many things led to his creativity.
Eager to have students back, he began the roadmap to retire, the roadmap to retire, where the students would learn.
A resonant communicator and not afraid to make tough decisions. Always for remarkable decisions.
Videos, podcasts, and a million interviews were the norms.
It was always important to get them, to get them committed.
Thank you, Dr. Arnold, for all that you've created for our, you've created new success.
Good luck on your retirement. We wish you the very best, the best.
Remember, kids, always, if they think you're for superintendent, always remember, smile, be happy, and let your friends grow, grow.
This is Cecil. Do you want to put a picture before we say that? I want to get a picture real quick. Board, y'all want to just, I guess.
What do you want? How do you want this?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, well, she's like that.
We wanted to just take a short recess. I believe we have some refreshments in the hall. There's many of you here that are here tonight that want to just say congratulations to Dr. Arnold and wish him the best. So, I just need a motion, board.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we recess for 15 minutes.
Okay, we, I need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And I guess at 6:45? All right, we'll be back at 6:45.
Hi, I'm Anthony Whitehead with Next Gen Aviators by Dynamic Aviation. Next Gen Aviators is a three-hour interactive immersive experience designed to introduce kids to aviation and the career technical fields that are associated with it. It's designed to be inspirational, to give many of these, these students their first opportunity to explore aviation, to take flight. We introduce kids not just to the pilot, which is obviously what most people think of first, but also to the mechanic, to the engineer, to the electronics, avionics technician. And we do this by giving them this varied or broad experience in that three and a half hours. We're hoping that these kids learn something about themselves, about their own strengths or skills or interests, and from that, they are inspired to pursue those dreams somehow or another. Associated with aviation is fantastic, but even if it's not, that's still a win, a win for us and a win for them.
Hi, I'm Craig Maddox. I'm the supervisor for Career and Technical Education at Amherst County Public Schools. Today, we're over at the airport in Lynchburg, going through a next-gen aviation event for our students. It was sponsored by a local business, Montague Miller, and we're grateful for their sponsor, and that's Lamborghini, and it's just a wonderful event for our students who come here and learn about different careers and, and, uh, the career path of aviation. So, it's just a wonderful event. Our kids do a lot of hand-off things as well, and don't actually climb in a plane. So, it's just really cool, and just appreciate everybody's help in this, and Ms. Becky Booth, Ms. Laura Castle, Ms. Shannon from the rescue, that worked on this to make this event happen for our high school kids. We don't want to leave out Dr. Arnold, who he's up right now and playing with some of our kids getting ready to come back down. So, it's just a great event, and we're excited for our kids, and excited to give him this opportunity.
We're going to be doing some pre-flight in the simulator first, all right? And then after that, you guys will be able to fly. How many first-time flyers today?
Hang out here, I'll get you all in a second.
How many first-time skydivers today? You guys are aware that the Luke Group is a skydiving group?
Okay.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
So, it was like you have to drop with your feet, and it was really hard, and not to kind of be easy with it, because if you like pull one, you're going to go straight that way. If you pull like your right wing, you pull it straight that way. And with this way, it's kind of hard, and then you have to like pull up. It was, it was easy once you got the hang of it, but it was also hard if you don't know what you're doing. I wrecked all the time. Yeah, not the best pilot, so don't want to be a pilot. I'll be the good, what's the person that walks in the aisle? The, the.
Stewardess.
Yeah, the stewardess, that could be that. That's easy. But, um, flying, yeah, it's all right. It was fun, it was really fun.
Well, you know, we're in there flying around. I wouldn't say I'm a pilot. I crashed and burned about five times. I get up in the air, and I think, it go down. It was just, I'm not made for a pilot, but it was a cool experience. Oh, my plane caught on fire several times, and I wrecked several times, and I ain't a pilot, so that's it.
Hold on about him. I felt professional doing what I was doing. I ain't a way of the, I ain't change my course to take off. So, I felt professional.
It was a good time, but I got knocked out in the air, test out of air.
Okay, nice. Yeah, you probably, you probably skimmed over it first. Pretty wide circle. These planes travel about 150 miles per hour. You cover the ground.
Does that sound fast?
Oh, yeah. It'll be, you'll be, you'll hit 95, you'll hit 95 miles an hour. When you're, when you're pulling off the ground, it'll be at 95 miles an hour.
What's the fastest airplane?
Fastest airplane moves over 2,000 miles an hour. Oh, I don't know, they retired from the Air Force a long time ago. Whenever you find out, though, you let me know, and I'll get, I'll get one too. Florida, you're probably going somewhere around 400. The speed of sound is around 675. You weren't quite going that fast, you're almost 100.
So, at this station, we just talked briefly about what the pilot would want to look for before he takes an airplane up to fly. So, unlike driving a car, when you're flying an airplane, if something goes wrong, you can't just pull up to the side of the road, right? So, I'm going to start off by asking you guys, what do you think a pilot wants to look for before he takes an airplane up to fly? Yeah, that's good. Fuel, we definitely want to check for fuel. All right, so there's two things that we check for in fuel. One, we, we dip the fuel tanks to make sure that we have enough fuel. Secondly, we drain fuel from about five or six different spots on the aircraft, and we look at it, and we're looking for contamination or water inside the fuel, all right? What are some other things we might want to look for? Check out the engine. Safety. What about safety? Seat belts? Yeah, so we want to check the weather. So, at this station, we're going to talk about more what we're going to be looking for on the airplane. We're going to make sure that this airplane is safe to go up into the air. You guys can get close to the airplane. All right, so when we're looking at our landing gear, there's, there's a couple of things that we want to check for. We want to make sure that we have clearance in our strut here that tells us that the strut is actually supporting the aircraft, and it's not just sitting on metal. We want to check all the attaching hardware and make sure that there's no abnormal wear or corrosion on it that tells us it's going to fail early. And then we want to check out this tire. We want to make sure that there's no wire sticking out of the tire or any flat spots on it that say that that tire is near the end of its life, all right? And lastly, we want to make sure that the landing gear is actually attached to the airplane. Now, it sounds like it should be a given, but like everything else in aviation, the reason it's an item to check is because sometimes that is not a given. All right, so we're going to walk around towards the side here, and we'll look at some other things. This is what we're walking around. I want to point out this safety feature right here, right? Does anybody know what this does? Can anybody take a guess? Now, so what this does, as the airplane continues to pitch up, this is going to start lifting up, and when it reaches up near the top there, you're going to start hearing a whistling sound inside the cockpit. You'll hear that when you're in the simulator, I'm certain that you'll hear it quite a bit. What that's telling you is that when you reach a certain angle of attack, it's no longer wind going over the wings, it's no longer producing lift. The airplane's going to start to drop, that's a stall. So, what that whistling is telling you is that you're about to enter a stall, a stall warning. So, you make sure that this is actually in operating condition, that it's actually dead, all right? So, starting walking around the back here, we will start talking about our moving flight surfaces. As I'm walking around the back here, we will start talking about our moving flight surfaces. This is our first one right here. This is gonna be our aileron. Anybody know what our aileron does for us? No, that would be your flaps. Our aileron actually does the majority of the turning for us in the airplane. So when we're up in the sky, we, the majority of our turning is done by rolling the airplane left and right. So this aileron is either gonna go up or down. And when this one goes up, the opposing aileron goes down and vice versa. Think about this for a second. If we were gonna be making a left-hand making turn, do you think this aileron would go up or down? Do I go down to make a left turn? Yeah, yeah, this one would go up and the right one would go down. It's opposite aileron down. So the one's gonna lift up that right wing and there's that left-making turn. Right now, on the back of a lot of the moving surfaces here, you'll see on the back of the aileron here, on the back of the rotor and on the back of the elevator, we have these guys right here. I want you guys to take your best educated guesses as I want to say, and I'll give you a big hint. It's not an antenna, it's not a sensor. No?
Somebody's taking a seat.
No? It's not flash. All right, so that's the basis of the pre-flight inspection. I'm gonna open it up to you guys now. What questions do you have about airplanes, aviation in general, flying? What questions can I answer?
How long do you go, like airplanes for?
How long do you go there? Well, it depends what you're flying. So if you just wanna, if you just wanna be a private pilot, just take you fly around and look at the sun and take your friends out for a vacation, you can do that in as little as a month. Just 40 hours of experience is all you need. And then you need to take your British exam and then go off your flight check and you have to make out a.
Do you need a license?
Yeah, you can need a license. So that's a bare minimum to get your private pilot license, 40 hours of flight. Yeah, now if you wanna be a commercial pilot, so if you fly, like our King Air is commercial, you need at least 200 hours, but we don't match this anybody with this 200 hours flight day. So 200 hours, they consider right seat as an F O, but I can have over 1,000 hours and most of them are standard. It's a very, very safe. You can be a commercial pilot with just a little 200 hours. If you want to fly with airlines, you need what's called an A C T, an airline transport. Anyhow, to be an airline transport pilot, this way, airline transport pilot, you need 200 hours minimum to be. And most airlines will have you fly 2,000 hours to be a pilot. Flying is very dangerous, almost anything you fly around early in the morning. You gotta go to like fly, fly the. Yeah, so there's two ways you can do it. You can go through a flight form or you can do a small part 61 training, be part of the flight instructor and just note it on the side. All right, so we're just about finished up here. Do I have any other last one in question I can answer? You guys are about to move into the flight simulator, all right? So you guys are gonna go wait at the base of those stairs and once the group comes out the front here, you guys will go up inside there.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we come out of break.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will resume our meeting. We are at the place of public comment. And before we do, I just want to make a really quick announcement. Just want to remind everyone that we have a special called meeting next Thursday, June 16th, at 5 o'clock. Am I correct with that, Natalia? Thank you. And the purpose for that meeting is for a signing ceremony and another reception for Dr. Wells as the new superintendent of Amherst County Public Schools. So we have a lot that we're celebrating tonight and we will continue that celebration next Thursday night, so hope that you will be able to join us at 5 o'clock. So now we're gonna move into public comments. The first one that we have tonight is Glenn Burley. Oops, I just saw you. Would you like to postpone for a minute? I saw your note that said you want to. That's fine. Okay, we're gonna move on to Ona McKenna.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board. My name is Ona McLennan. I'm a school bus driver for special ed services in the school system. I've been driving a bus, a special ed bus, other buses for over 10 years now for Amherst County. And I care for the well-being of our students as much as anyone in this room. This next school year, August, September, October, sometime during the year, a transgender student will make himself or herself known to you and will ask for your help. This student, who is 40% more likely to attempt suicide, will ask for your protection against bullying and discrimination based on gender identity. Additionally, this student and his or her family may ask for special consideration regarding the use of a restroom. This student and his or her family may ask you to use personal pronouns different from the ones you have used earlier for this student. A person cannot be indoctrinated into being transgender. Being transgender is a seed planted by God. Whether acknowledged by others or not, the seed is there. And it's kind of like having a rock in your shoe. The problem won't go away until you do something about it. While respecting differences of opinion and belief, I'm asking you to make compassionately reasonable accommodations for this student, whoever that person may be. This student's well-being may depend on how you react to him or her, as well as the reactions of those in the student's school. For the transgender student, these things I'm asking you are the best path to reaching the goal that you and I share for this student and for all our students. You and I want this student to survive and to succeed and to eventually contribute in positive ways to our community. This is our goal. To some in our community, a transgender family and a transgender person is a target for criticism or bullying or even shunning. I have experienced that and I may be opening myself up to further criticism and bullying and shunning in the future. I know from personal experience that a transgender family and a transgender person have important gifts to share with our community. And I know from personal experience that transgender families and transgender persons are as loved by God and valued by God as every person in this room. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Erin Tomlin.
Erin Tomlin, 181 Woods Edge, Amherst. I've also been teaching in the county for 14 years now. Board members, discipline seems to be the main source of frustration for many of us this past year. Disciplinary measures in our schools and the behavior matrix used by the county, for many of us, seems to be broken and ineffective. We were told at the beginning of the year that behavior issues were gonna be caused by stress and anxiety from COVID, students not knowing how to act because of missing nearly 18 months of school. And because of this, our approach to handling behavior this year would have to be different. Instead of holding students accountable for their own personal actions, the behavior procedures this year instead gave them a crutch justification, justification for their bad behaviors and poor choices and took their personal accountability and placed it somewhere else. When behavior issues escalated after the first nine weeks, teachers were told to just be patient and consistent with the parameters outlined in the county-wide disciplinary procedures. And this seemed to become a response every time concerns were raised. It was a classic case of insanity, doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. These procedures were supposed to bring consistency and discipline across the county, but it didn't. Instead, it allowed students to rack up referrals in a multitude of categories before having to face any real serious consequences. When teachers and staff brought up their concerns or voiced their opinions over behavior, some of us were told we need to brush up on our classroom management skills, reprimanded for speaking up, or led to believe that the issues were being caused by inconsistencies in dealing with the discipline from the actual school principals. Never was, it, never was the actual district-wide procedures ever called into question or acknowledged as being a possible root of this problem. The blame was always diverted somewhere else. Teachers and staff are frustrated, parents of good kids are frustrated. Building principals had to unfairly carry the brunt of this frustration from their faculty and parents because their hands are tied as far as what they can and can't do in regards to discipline. The county-wide discipline procedure is not working. My hope for next year is that everyone in this room will stop diverting teacher concerns, stop making excuses for poor student behavior, stop reprimanding faculty and staff for speaking up about frustrations with behavior, and start looking at how the district discipline procedures can hold students accountable for their ill behavior. You all are hearing teachers, but are you actually listening to us, the ones who spend every day, seven hours for the whole school year in the classroom with them? Our motto is every child, every day, not some children, some days.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlin. Kathy Stone?
I am a resident in Amherst County, but tonight I am speaking to as an employee of the school division. I teach at Amherst County High School and the autism program. I think it's truly important to know the people who work in this division, the people that have been hired to provide leadership, the people that serve as role models and examples not only for our students but for our staff as well. Last March, I was diagnosed with cancer. One day it was fine and the next day it wasn't. It was a shocking diagnosis. If you've ever been in that position, you know it, 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 it happens very quickly. You don't have time to think, you don't have time to process. You don't know me, but my teaching is very important to me. After 23 years of teaching, I still have a passion and an enthusiasm for special education. My job in Amherst County continues to be a tremendous source of joy. I was determined that I was not going to allow my cancer to interfere with my teaching. Unfortunately, cancer doesn't follow any of the rules. From the very beginning of my diagnosis, I had members of this division that went out of their way to help me. When time was of the essence, Dr. Wells was able to locate and help me to receive a COVID vaccine before I started chemotherapy. Josh Neighbors met with me multiple times, actually, to provide support and encouragement on how I could work while I was receiving treatments. And then when I couldn't anymore, that it was okay not to. Julie Alberts was with me from day one and she provided personal support that I didn't really know I needed. She remains an amazing source of encouragement and friendship for me. Shortly after my diagnosis, somebody told me that people would surprise you and people that you thought would be there wouldn't and people that you didn't know would be there would. Three years ago, I got an email from a new administrator and then an email included a tagline on the bottom that said, "People don't care who you know until you know that they care." And I really never took that seriously because I thought, you know, it, it looks good on your email. Here's the thing, though, that administrator means it. That administrator from the very beginning has been beyond supportive to me. He met with me shortly after finding out I had cancer, not really knowing anything, listened and offered to help in any way he could. I didn't want anyone at work to know and so what, what he did is he went ahead and he told staff for me because I could not. He checked in regularly with me when I had treatments. I was out of work for some time and never did more than two or three weeks go by that I didn't hear from him and he didn't ask how I was doing and how he could help. I've been back to school now for a few weeks and, and every day, he continues to check in and see if I need anything to see how I feel. Over the course of the past year, a lot of things have changed and I've come to appreciate a lot of things. And I think sometimes that we quite often don't always recognize the good in the things. It's easier to complain about things and not say the good things and not recognize the good things. I was very much impacted by his intentional display of, of caring and kindness. I know now what Dr. Brown means when he says that you don't know, you don't care what somebody knows unless you know they care.
Thank you, Mrs. Stone.
I'm very fortunate to be proud of Amherst Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers that, people that wish to speak tonight? Mr. Burley?
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the school board. I'm Glenn Wood Burley from Richmond. Thank you for the privilege to give me to come up and make some comments. When history is written in the 21st century of our moment in time on this earth, it should be an asterisk for 19, 20, 20, 21, 22. Asterisk should represent the uniqueness, the impressiveness in the leadership, in the commitment, in the focus, in the vision of Rob Arnold. I'm gonna go further than him tonight because I'm miles away in a city, capital of a state, and you ought to be extraordinarily proud and appreciative of what you have in this county that other counties and some of the cities in the state do not have. You don't have the pandemonium, the blood in the hallways, leaking roofs and buckets and budgets. 20,000 chrome laptops was just discovered. 1,700 are missing in one school district. So I'm not here to talk about Richmond. I'm here to talk about how when Bob Arnold, Rob Arnold walks out of these doors, he's not history. He's left an impressiveness that you all can attest to, maybe a couple of you and you that I haven't met. But this is beyond Bob Arnold, I keep saying Bob and I know I'm supposed to say Rob, is he's leaving a concept of teamwork and a legacy that every one of you administrative people that have worked with him and under him and around him and indirectly of him in district schools, he's leaving his template of professionalism and his template of vision and accomplishment. And if I have one word to describe this individual that who's coming to this county from nowhere that none of you knew, he leaves excellence. And that excellence is going to continue here. And each one of you as a school board member should tap what he's brought to this county as a superintendent. And each one of you as a school board member should tap what he's brought to this county as a superintendent. And Dr. Wells, he'll do fine. Dr. Wells is not Dr. Arnold, and Dr. Arnold is not civilized. Ms. Liggins is not Ms. Thompson, vice versa. You all have your individualities of leadership. But this man here, the legacy that he's left and the contributions he's made in four years and what you've tapped from him from learning, incorporating your team concept is priceless. It's priceless. And this guy's a kid to me. I'm I'm over eight. I'll be eight in a couple of months. He has inspired me from miles away, and he has inspired these students who've graduated. Look, this is a template tonight of what came in here and who was recognized for their archery. Because they are not on the street, they out shooting and getting national awards. And he's as proud of them as their parents are and as their teachers are. So continue that. So this is not all about, my comments are not all about this individual who's about to leave here. It's about you that who's still are going to remain. It's about Dr. Wells and tomorrow and his tapping of his style of leadership. And you should be so proud. Why does this impact me so much? Because I see I see where I live so much inept and disgusting failure to be leaders and teamwork people. And you have most of that. And it's like Ms. Liggins said, there's been some thunderstorms, maybe some hail, a couple of them. And maybe some winds with some issues. And I'm not apprised of that. I'm not interested in that. But I'm just saying collectively, that when you walk in this building tonight, you have a proud administrative staff from whoever to whoever to whoever to whatever position you are. Keep them, tap their knowledge, and support them as school as school board officials. And this county will do fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burley. We appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak tonight? Okay, we will close public session, public comment. We will move on to administrative. No, I am wrong.
Yes, you're correct. Yes. So listed is to discuss and consider approval of changes to citizens addressing the board during public comment. That was a thing that you guys wanted to to determine. In April, I believe, we brought you a proposed statement to be read at the beginning of the board meetings. It was the the decision of the board to kind of work collaboratively through email. And so I guess my my question tonight is, where are we in that in that place? Because I also know that there are some questions about what people need to say in terms of where they're from, that kind of thing as well. So this is this is really a request to say, how are we doing with a statement?
Well, I I will say that I believe Mr. Terry and I said that we would work on that, and we have not. We have, you know, we've been busy with working on on hiring superintendent. But at this point, we do need to do that, and I appreciate you reminding us. One of the reasons that I brought this up and wanted to talk with us about it tonight is because the second thing that you mentioned, we had our board of supervisors who require our citizens, when they have public comment, to give their name and their voting district as opposed to their address for no reason other than just for more anonymity. And I know that we had a situation that some of you expressed concern with that. So we mentioned it, but we never did look at that to take a vote. So I thought it would be good to bring that back up and see if that was your pleasure. And is there any comments or thoughts that you might like to share?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Terry.
So we have not had a chance to, you know, formally discuss it. You and I kind of shared a few little thoughts. But personally, my opinion on it is to allow the person speaking to decide whether they want to give their address, give their voting district, or just give their name. Leave it up to the the person. That's my opinion. So.
Ms. Liggins, do you have any thoughts?
Not really. I'm kind of like Mr. Terry, you know. I don't see where the voting district is of essence of necessity here. Did we have a reason for that?
I don't think it was a necessity. I think it was that if a person wasn't comfortable with giving their address, that they could give their voting district in lieu of that.
Oh, in lieu of, okay. So, I mean, I'm like Mr. Terry. I mean, I think it'd be up to the individual, you know. I think I share with you my comments that if a parent is coming to talk to us, as they should, about their child or their school, the the child could very well be in a different school than they voted. Kids are out of zone, so I I really didn't see a reason to say what district you're in unless you choose. I don't see any political necessity there. You know, if we're going to do that, we will say all kinds of things, you know. Where you work, kind of car you drive. These things are insignificant to the comments that would be made about their child's education. That's my comment.
Thank you. Ms. Burke.
Yes, Madam Chair. I agree with Mr. Terry. I know during some issues we had going on in the school, I had parents reach out to me that were concerned about giving their address and having it livestreamed through Facebook and YouTube. So again, with Mr. Terry, I believe it should be up to the parents. Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Justice.
Madam Chair, I agree with Mr. Terry and the rest of the board that leaving it up to the speaker's preference is agreeable to me.
Mr. Rossi.
The way I interpret it is that if a speaker is at the podium and wishes to address the board, I would like to know if that speaker is at least from within the county. Just tonight, we've we've heard from somebody outside the county. And also, if they address the board and with a concern with just a name, how does the board contact that person? You know, if they have an issue that needs our attention, how do we contact that person and then say, "Okay, we've looked at this. This is what we found. This is what we're doing about it." How do we communicate that if we don't have a way to communicate it, if they don't offer it? Is my only concern.
So would optional work for you if a parent wanted to do that?
Oh, optional would definitely work. I would at least like to know if they're in the county or not in the county. That would be my only request.
So a voting district would identify them as a county resident?
Yeah, but I don't think a voting district is really necessary. I just, I'm an Amherst County resident. Does it does it matter what district they're from?
I don't know. I I just threw that out. I believe that's what the board supervisors did. No other rationale other than that?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Terry.
I I would like to see whenever we do, wherever, whichever direction we go, if a parent or a speaker would like to be contacted but not speak publicly their address, that they have the option of leaving it with someone in the administration's office to get to us if they need a resolution or something. It's a way to get in touch with us without having it broadcast across Facebook Live.
I believe that was in that proposed language in the statement, how to make sure that we can connect administration or whoever needs to connect back with them. I think that was written in that original. I'm not saying that the original needs to be used. I'm just saying it's in the, there's language in there. So if y'all can tap back into that, I think you can answer those concerns.
All right. So if we were to pull that out and and make sure that everyone's on board with that, just send that in. Okay, that sounds great. Thank you. I appreciate you very much. Okay, I think we're at 4.02.
Yes. So as as we have come to the end of our school board calendar year, it is necessary for you guys to approve the regular July meeting. And once you do that, then you will, at that July meeting, you will approve a calendar for the entire year. That calendar is, that proposed calendar is attached to your board docs. But all we need from you tonight is to consider approval of July 14th as the regular July school board meeting.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept July 14th as our next school board meeting.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we are down to our consent agenda.
Madam Chair, for, it's small tonight. It's hard for me to see it. I just had a special request for that. If we can pull out numbers 11, 17, 18, 21, and 22 from that, please.
Okay, I have a motion.
Can I ask this?
Yes.
Pull it out to discuss where?
Oh, that's right.
I'm sorry, in executive session?
So I have a motion that before we look and approve the consent agenda, that we pull out of 5.02, items number 11, 17, 18, 21, and 22 for further discussion in closed session for personnel.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a second. I have a second from Mr. Rossi. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
So, Madam Chair, now you can vote on the entirety of the consent agenda.
Now we need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Priscilla, Mrs. Liggins, I'm sorry. Mrs. Liggins has made a motion. Have a second?
Second.
A second by Mrs. Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda has been approved. Now we're down to 6.01.
Madam Chair, ladies and all aboard. Tonight, we have administrative updates. So we have Mr. Josh Bauer from Krebge Urban Associates. He's going to present to you the plan for the auditorium addition, cafeteria renovation, CTE expansion and renovation, as well as the field renovations and field house for baseball and softball. He's going to go over that with you at this time.
All right. Well, the good news is technology works, so that's a great start. So good evening, everybody. I am Josh Bauer with Krebge Urban Associates Architects. We're going to be going through the the four phases that have been established for the for the renovations project at the high school. Dr. Arnold asked me to keep this under two hours, and I do promise to do do that.
15 minutes.
So we'll do our best to get through this. And so we'll go through this. There's there's four specific phases. So we're going to talk about the phases and the and the probable costs that we are anticipating for each one of those phases. So Phase 1, from a simplicity standpoint, is looking at the the auditorium and commons addition. And we'll go through these more in detail. So that is Phase 1. Dining space. To renovate, I'm sorry. Phase 3 is to renovate the CTE and classroom spaces. And then Phase 4 is we're looking at renovating this, doing some limited renovations of the stadium and then creating the new softball, baseball field house. So we're looking at the at the phases. So again, the addition, and you can see it there in red, is the, we're looking to construct the new 1,100-seat auditorium addition along with the dining common space and and that walkway as part of Phase 1. And that essentially is going over top of what is the old driver's ed course. We're also looking as part of Phase 1 is to increase the amount of parking on the stadium side. So you can see there, it's in the top right-hand corner, that we're looking to expand the parking to create additional spaces, not only for for your school, but then also for the athletic stadium. So we're looking at that, as of right now, we're planning on going out to bid sometime in the October timeframe of this of this year. And what that means is that drawings and the design will be complete. We're going to be permitting the contractors publicly to bid on the project to give us numbers back. And we're anticipating that Phase 1, that auditorium and dining commons addition along with the parking lot, is going to start right away. So that will be part of Phase 1. The good news about that is that this is going to have as much of, as limited of a impact on the the student's daily life. That we're going to, this addition is happening away from the classrooms, and this will be a contiguous timeline. So once we start in the October, November timeframe for construction, that will go about 16 to 18 months to completion. So that will happen all during the school year. We will have a clear separation between the contractors and the construction activity and the students. As we go to Phase 2, as it was the cafeteria, the the kitchen and the the food court renovations, we're looking to to focus that work on summer of '23 and '24. And the idea is is that, and we'll get a little more depth about this, but the idea is that we do not want to have your kitchen down during the school year. So the idea is that we're going to be doing the kitchen probably in summer of '23 and most likely the food court in summer of '24. But the idea is is that we will always have the ability to serve students' food during during the school year. Looking at Phase 3, which is to then take your existing auditorium and some of the spaces that we're going to be vacating to move into the addition. The CTE labs, again, this is, we're proposing this to be summer work, so summer '23 and '24. Because especially with the CTE labs, which, by the way, you guys do a fantastic job with your CTE program. You really do. And and I applaud you for the for the fantastic strides that every, that the school division has made to make such a great CTE program, and this this project will only enhance that. So again, we're looking to renovate those spaces in summer of '23 and '24. Because we're looking at those spaces, the welding labs and the culinary, they're not really conducive to move them to another space and have them in in just a academic environment. We want to make sure those labs are always operational for the students. And then finally, Phase 4, so which is the renovations to the to Lanier Stadium and also the softball field house. We're trying to focus those on in the summertime of '23 and '24 with the efforts to try to minimize the impact on athletics, on graduation, all those other pieces that could happen in the in the stadium and also in your softball and baseball. Okay, so that's kind of the the timeframe that we're proposing for for the contractors to do the work. So now let's let's kind of do a little bit deeper dive into the into the phases. So we're looking at Phase 1, and Phase 1, from a simplicity standpoint, is we're looking at the addition. And in that addition is going to happen, is going to be 1,100-student auditorium along with some concessions, your your toilet rooms, the dining commons, and also that's going to become the lobby for for both your your gymnasium and your and your auditorium is all going to be part of this phase. And again, we're proposing that that work to start in the October, November timeframe of 2022. And so that will be a primarily focused on the addition and not really working on the on the on the renovations. So as we kind of do a little bit deeper dive into this, looking at the auditorium. So go from the top down, as we're looking at putting a stage. So your current stage is about 1,500 square feet. We're proposing to roughly double the size of the stage and really, really enhance your performing arts ability and also the ability for outside events. You know, that's what's, one of the things that's great about this, about this specific part of the the project is that this will really allow the community to safely use this space after hours on the weekends and really start to engage, engage those folks and have a safe separation from the the auditorium and that have a secondary entrance. And the auditorium in that lobby is going to be able to use without any access to the remainder of the building. So it really just becomes a community-friendly space. So we're looking at the, so at the stage, your prop storage, your dressing rooms. And and the auditorium itself, the the gallery, which is a space where you sit to watch an event, is going to have the ability to have a a separation and a partition that will, that is movable, that will separate that into two different spaces. Not only will that allow you to, during the day, to have multiple events so that you can have a classroom, a a events happening on the stage. You can also have an event in that in that initial row of seating in the auditorium. But then the back of the auditorium can also be separated. So you can have three different events happening at the same time in your auditorium. The, and so those partitions will fold back to allow them to be open into one big space. And then we'll talk about the classrooms here in a moment. So this is a section, kind of kind of cutting through the auditorium itself. And going from left to right, you know, which which you would have there is your is your corridor that's going to be able to access the classrooms. In this particular shot, we would have a section cutting through the through the coral room, you know, your your vocal space. Then as we move into the auditorium, you kind of see those steps down. So the back of the auditorium is going to have more of a step seating. What that does for you is it allows us to have more seating in that area and also a better line of sight. The further you go back, if you bend to an auditorium and you kind of sit in the back, and for those of us who are a little vertically challenged, you may have a challenge of being able to see in front of the person, the person in front of you. Having the step seating in the back really does allow us to have the best line of sight and also, you know, to be able to view the stage and from, you know, the ability to do testing and other other things that are happening, you know. And that allows us to have storage for each of those classrooms. So your band, your vocal, and your coral can have storage built underneath those. So it really kind of maximizes the the use of that space. The difference between the Um, the difference between the top and the bottom is that folding partition that goes in the middle of the auditorium. Um, as I said, one, that, that is a huge benefit for the school division and for after-hours, to be able to separate that into two separate spaces, so if you want to have, as I said, a, a testing or, or some teaching that's happening in that step seating, that folding partition will, will go across, and it's a sound partition, so that way in the front of the auditorium, if you want to have an event going on, an assembly that can happen in that space without interrupting that, that class that's happening, you know, in the stepped area, um, and then you can see the, as the, the low slope that goes down in the front, um, and then your stage, which we recommend between three and four feet between the, the seating area and the stage. Uh, so, a- as part of this, what we're really trying to do is maximize the amount of, of, uh, uses that you can happen at any one time, uh, but also giving you, going from four hundred fifty seats, which you currently have, to eleven hundred seats in your auditorium, really maximizing the amount of student use, uh, that you have to be able to for assemblies and, and other events. So, as we look at the, the classrooms, um, you know, when we, uh, we started looking at this and meeting with the, with the teachers, one of the things that we heard is, well, Josh, this is great that we're able to, to put this auditorium in, but now we're going to have your, your coral and your band classrooms are going to be on the other side as, as, as where the current, in, in the spaces they are, uh, so without increasing the square footage, what we were able to do is adjacent to this space is create a band room, a new band room, a new coral room, and a new theater arts, I'm sorry, am I not loud enough? Sorry, is that better? Okay. Um, so, uh, th- this will allow you to create, you know, to, to have these spaces that are directly adjacent, that have the most impact on the, on the, on the theater arts. Um, so going from left to right, we have your, uh, your theater classroom, which can also double as a black box, uh, your coral classroom, and then your band classroom on, on the far right-hand side. Um, right now, what we're showing is access from the, from the dining commons to be able to get to those spaces, try to, 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 to keep the amount of travel distance between the, the classrooms and where these, these classes are at any one time. Um, so, so this is right now where, where we are in design, um, so we're going to be working through this for the summer, and it's, uh, looking to go out to bid in, in, um, in the October timeframe for this. This is just an image of a, of a similar auditorium, uh, we've had a, a fortunate ability to do a lot of high school auditoriums, and what you see here is the, um, you're, you're standing on the stage, and you have that low-slope seating, which we talked about in the front, the folding partitions, which will allow you to separate the front, you know, that low-slope, uh, seating from your back, which has that step seating, and what you can see is a really great line of sight in that back seating, um, you know, I said, and then we, so we have that folding partition, which will allow you to separate this into two completely separate spaces. Uh, so this is just a, a picture of an example of a similar auditorium that we're proposing. So some exterior shots, some things that are important is, is, is again to create that secondary entrance, have it a, um, a very visible entrance that, that the, while we have, we will have accessible parking in the, in the same area, um, where your, your current driver's ed, uh, courses, um, but across the street is where the majority of the parking is going to be happening for, for events. So, when you're parking there, we want it to be very visible and very evident of where that, where that secondary entrance is. And then also on the left-hand side, which you can see is, is the, um, is the, uh, uh, the dining commons. Um, some things that are allowed, you know, that this now is a shot looking from across the street, you can see the, uh, the glass looking in the dining commons and, and the very evident front entrance for this. Um, this will continue to evolve, um, as we go through the design of what this, uh, what this elevation is going to look like. Um, you know, as we look at the amount of glass, what is appropriate, of how to control that glass, because the dining commons, we all, is, is a great function for dining, but also we want to make sure this is a very technology-friendly environment, uh, for a lot of, uh, ability for collaborative, uh, learning labs. So that's phase one, so phase one, as I said, is focusing on the addition. Phase two is, is the, um, is focusing on the kitchen, uh, so one of the things that we're going to be asking the contractor to do is try to wrap up the, the dining commons area as part of phase one as quickly as possible. Uh, so in summer of twenty-three, what we're proposing is to, is, is to have them finish up the, the dining commons and to take your existing portion of your dining commons and create the new kitchen there, so the area in gray, um, is where we're proposing to put the new kitchen, and once that new kitchen is operational, then, then what we can do is take your existing kitchen and make that your food court. Uh, so, so the goal is that by the end of summer of twenty-four, when the students come back for the fall, is to have the, the, to have all of this area complete, your food court, your kitchen, your dining commons is all going to be complete by the time the students come back in fall of twenty-four, uh, so that way all of this is completely done, and it's, the, the goal is to never have a time where we don't have the ability to serve hot food. Yes, in, in, in April and May, it is super awesome to have bag lunches, but that's really not what, you know, that's not what our goal is. Um, it's also awesome to be having, you know, teaching outside, but that's, you know, but again, that's not what our goal is. Um, so, as, as part of this, we're trying to think about phasing, not just what, what the building aesthetics are going to look like and functionality. Uh, so here's a miniature rendering of what that food court could look like, um, you know, again, not only is this going to serve as a food court, um, you know, during the dining period, but also we want to have the ability for technology that large groups of students are able to meet in this space to be able to have, to do collaborative learning, you can have multiple English classrooms or math, or a combination of, of, of science and math coming together, um, and this also would serve as the lobby, you know, for after-hours events, so the, the, the dining space, you know, imagine you're coming in there for, you know, for an event on the weekends, and you have the ability to have this as your, as your dining commons or your space and your lobby to be able to go to a, to a basketball game or go to, um, an auditorium event. Uh, so, as we, as we look at, um, uh, uh, phase two, we do want to take a quick, brief moment here, um, to talk about, talk about potties. Uh, this is truly one of my favorite topics to talk about, uh, because I spent the last year of my life talking about them, and I think I've gotten really good about talking about potties. Um, so, so here's the challenge, and, and, and I know that you have limited challenges, but every school division right now in Virginia is experiencing the challenge with that wonderful thing called TikTok, and I'm being facetious when I say TikTok is a wonderful thing. Um, so, so what's happening is that we're seeing everything from toilet paper spencers being torn off to all the other inappropriate behavior, the bullying, which is not something that's new. Um, so, so what we're seeing is that the damage and the misbehavior and the bullying that's happening inside of bathrooms, so what can we do to, and yes, we can, we can put that on the shoulders of our administrators and say, guys, fix this. Uh, but what can we do is, as, as we're designing this, to make it easier for administrators and teachers to be able to see what, what is, what nonsense is going on, and, and can we do better? Um, so, this design that, that we're proposing is something that we're doing in, in many, many school divisions in Hanover and, and Montgomery County, um, and, and Brunswick and, and other school divisions, to try to, to fix the problems of, of, that we have, the big three, the misbehavior, the, the damages being done, and the bullying that's going on, what can we do to improve that? Uh, so here's what we're proposing, is to, is to, uh, pull the, and not have a behind-the-wall type event. So, to pull the sinks out, you know, and have the sinks out in the open air, um, and what you can see, oh, you can't see. Uh, but what you can see on the top of your screen is that what we're doing is, is instead of having your toilet rooms where you're going behind the wall, and now most of the events are happening behind, you know, behind that wall in that secluded area, pulling the sinks out and make that more of a public space, so not only can that allow you to, to wash your hands, um, you know, before you go into the restroom, or just wash your hands, um, but also, you know, the, so the events that are happening, the most private events in your life are still going to be private. Uh, so what we're showing here is individual toilet rooms for every single stall, um, and you're saying, wow, that, wouldn't that be awesome? Even if you go to sheets right now, go to sheets, and, and we are terrible in the United States about having this huge gap between the floor and the, and, and the wall, and you can see and be like, oh, hey Fred, how are you? Because you can see in between the stalls and the doors, what can we do to do a better job of that? So, so what we're showing here is that these toilet partitions are going to be individual stalls for, for every single toilet. Uh, they go floor to ceiling, and there is no gap in between the doors and the walls. Uh, so what this does is, is during your most private activity in your life, is you're, you're the most private that's happening while you're doing your, your event, but once you're done, you come out and it's, that, that, events that are happening behind the wall of the toilets can, are, are limited, because the, the sinks and the rest of that event is happening, you know, is happening out in the quarter, so what could that look like? So here's a couple images of what that could look like, so as you're going down the corridor, you know, what you're going to see is you're going to see open-air sinks, um, but it said, the, those partitions, those individual toilet rooms for every single person, um, are going to be completely private, there's no gaps between the walls and the doors, and the partitions go from floor to ceiling. So you're going to have, during your most private event, you're going to have complete privacy behind that door. Um, here's another shot, as you, as you're going down further, and so what you can see here is that this is, while you're having, you know, what, you said, while you're doing your business, it is the most private there. And yes, I am, we're having this conversation with every school division, because everyone, um, regardless of whether it's Virginia, whether it's Maryland or Pennsylvania, everybody's having the same challenges with the misbehavior. So what can we do in our designs to make this better and make this, make, make it easier for administrators to not have to have those, those behind-the-wall events to where student behavior could happen? Um, and, and if you've been bullied, you know, hopefully you've never been bullied in your life, again, those of us who are vertically challenged, you know, may have been a, a little bit more, so I, I appreciate the opportunities to not have those events behind the wall that could happen. So I just want to take a small pause and let's talk about potties, um, and I won't talk about it again for the rest of the night. Um, so, now, as we look at phase three, um, almost fifteen minutes, Dr. Arnold, we're almost there. Um, so, doc, phase three, uh, which is super exciting, because now what we're doing is we're looking to create the remainder of the portion of the dining commons into four, um, in, in, into four, uh, world language classrooms. We're taking your existing auditorium, we're converting that into classrooms and a couple office space, um, along with, with the nursing, with creating a brand-new nursing lab, and having a nursing lab that has an individual classroom with a great line of sight, uh, so we're cre, so we're creating a new nursing lab that is going to be part of the stage and the, and then the seating in the auditorium. Um, we're also taking the existing band room, and we're going to convert that into, into the, um, um, if I can spit it out. Oh my goodness, it's been a long day, cosmetology, thank you, into, into the cosmetology lab. Um, and, uh, so, so the cosmetology will have a brand-new lab along with the classroom. As we continue to move down, uh, we're going to make some renovations to culinary arts to have better line of sight between the classroom and the, and the lab space, uh, we're going to increase the size of welding lab. Um, again, you have a fantastic welding program, a lot of students would love to do it, right now you only have fifteen, fifteen stations. We're going to increase that to twenty stations, have better line of sight and, and with the, with the stations around the perimeter of the welding, um, and then create a new ag lab, uh, with an adjacent classroom. Uh, so this will give you an opportunity for doing wonderful things, including small farm animals, um, in that ag lab, do some more horticulture, and really kind of enhance the program that you already have, that you already have. Finally, phase four, uh, so phase four is to improve accessibility, um, in your stadium, again, you have a beautiful, beautiful stadium, you guys have done such a great job with it, uh, so what can we do to make it more friendly for, uh, for accessibility? And that's both on the upper side, um, and on the lower side, uh, creating additional, uh, uh, accessible parking, um, and also creating a better environment to be able to get from the lower side up to the toilet rooms and also the concessions. If, you know, not just sports, but also senior nights, you know, and other athletic events and graduation, when you have things going on, let's not just limit the accessibility to the upper portion of the stadium, let's make sure your, your stadium is friendly for, uh, for all, for all folks in all different areas. Um, and then finally, um, is the, is the field house, um, at the, at the softball, some things that we're going to be able to do is provide toilet rooms, actual toilet rooms to support potties, uh, for both softball and baseball. Um, also some, some great accessible seating, and we'll have a couple spaces there for, um, for accessible parking spaces. So, so folks that, that, um, have the tags can be able to park, you know, in the area adjacent, uh, go use toilet rooms and also have much better visibility for your softball, um, again, you have, you have some beautiful facilities, so these are just enhancements of those facilities. Okay, just a little bit more than fifteen minutes, um, so, lastly, um, is right now, um, we, we really sincerely appreciate the amount that the supervisors have given us for this project. Um, here's each one of the phases and the dollars that we're posing, this is the total project cost, not the construction cost, because what we don't want, we want, we don't want surprises, uh, so this includes your furniture and your, and your permitting fees and your design fees, and all those pieces are included in these numbers, this is your total project cost, uh, because what I said, what we don't want is we don't want surprises, like, oh, well, this is the construction cost, guys, but you need three more, three million dollars more to cover the balance of it, that's not what we're proposing. Uh, so we, we broke up, you know, each one of these phases, um, and this is what the proposed cost is for each one of those phases as we go forward, we will continue to monitor those, um, with the challenging construction cost environment that we've had. Um, and, uh, you know, but what we're hoping as the, as a industry, is that as we get further into the year, that things are going to calm down a little bit, um, and it's, but we will keep a tune on this, um, and make sure that, that we're, as we're putting this out to bid, that the construction drawings are appropriate based on the cost market that we're seeing. Okay, um, so that's, that's the presentation? Doctor?
I have, I have one question. Will there be any type of technology, drop-down screens, or, you know, the plugins in the walls and things that teachers can use if they popped in there and did a classroom?
Yes ma'am, so, so not only will we have the ability to, um, to darken the room, so that way you don't have the daylight coming in, um, but also we're proposing to put screens down and projectors that are going to be fixed, um, to allow the ability for, and also would have its own audio system, so that way you could have, you could have projections down, you can have a larger group of students in there, um, or a single class, uh, but we want to make sure that that space and all spaces are very technology-friendly as much as possible, so that's, that's a fantastic question.
Thank you. Board members, you have any questions?
I had a couple of questions, Madam Chair. Um, for the auditorium, um, my, one of my kids is at Tech right now, and I was asking him and all his buddies, you know, what did, or what could have ambers done to make your transition easier? And they said their biggest thing was having classes in the auditorium, is our auditorium going to be set up where we can have, um, classes set in there for students to get used to before they go off to college?
That's a wonderful question, and as a matter of fact, um, the, when we go back to the back of the auditorium, um, that the, the step seating is very, is very conducive to what you would see in a university environment, um, with that step seating and those, and those type, and each chair is going to have the ability for a, for an actual, uh, platform for the students to work on, um, so, so, and that's why we're dividing it into two, a front and a back section, so that way if you, you know, if, if coral's practicing for their event, that the back of the auditorium can have a sound partition, and they can still remain, still have class in the back section of the auditorium with three or four hundred students at any one time. Uh, so the, the back of the auditorium is going to be very complimentary towards a university-style, um, a large format, which, I'm sorry if they, you know, that's great they went to Tech, but I went to Tech University, but yes, that is absolutely, if you go to, if you go to, you know, to, um, to your, your science classes, there's three hundred kids in the class, um, so the, this would be very similar to what they would experience in college, in, in the back of the auditorium, that's a great question.
Okay, and I also wanted to thank you for the effort you put forth in the field house, the ambers there, are they going to be similar?
Yes, so that, we, we're trying to go with individual stalls for everywhere, um, and again, it just creates the most amount of privacy and really starts to eliminate some of the nonsense that can happen, so, that's a great question, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Rossi?
I, uh, I have a question about the, um, the design, and I understand it's just a design concept right now. The, the glass on the lower portion, do you happen to know what type of glass we're going to be using in all that beautiful window you have there?
I, I do, um, and we would be happy to talk with, when, so we have to be very careful in what we talk about, security, um, in a public environment, so we would be very happy to discuss the in-depth, um, nature of what the glass specifically would be or would not be, um, I would prefer not to speak about it in a, in a public environment, only because we don't want to, uh, share sensitive information like that, uh, with that, so, but, one thing that we do want to share is that we, we primarily do schools, and we do schools all throughout the, the, all throughout the East Coast, um, and we are very sensitive to security and making sure that we understand we're, we're trying to provide the best environment for the students, uh, without creating a non-educational environment, if that, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
So I would absolutely, um, in, in a closed session, love to talk about, because you are allowed to talk about security, um, in closed session, we'd be more than happy to talk with you about that anytime of your leisure.
Great, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Hi, Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Justice.
Um, the sound divider, can you give a little bit more of a picture of what that's like? All I have in my image is like the corrugated folding doors, and it's like, or walls that are supposed to be walls, but they're not walls.
Yes ma'am, unfortunately, when we went to school, that was kind of the, that, that was kind of what we saw, is that they were little corrugated thing, and you, and you might as well not have them there, they're only a visual divider, not a sound divider. Uh, the great news is that now with the sound partitions, they're actually a panel, um, and so they, they have an STC rating of all the way up to sixty right now, which is basically the same amount as a eight-inch concrete block. Um, so that would, again, that would go floor to ceiling, you know, in your auditorium, and be able to close down. What's really awesome is that they not only have paired panels, so you're only pulling two panels at one time, it's not the entire wall, um, you know, but we can also do an automated one, an electronic one that would actually to close down. Uh, but yes, the, we, we hear that, that constant concern is, okay, well, great, you, you, what's the point of having it? But yes, the, the new tech, newer technology allows it to be insulated, and it has a great STC rating from one, uh, from one space to another.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Bauer.
We sincerely appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, here, now you've seen the presentation, we just ask for consensus to move forward with the process. You've seen what the, what this, the concept looks like, and we just need to be able to move forward so they can get the design, actual, more detailed designs done, so we just need a consensus to move forward.
Board members, on Mr. Rossi?
Yeah, I'm motion that we move forward with the design, yes.
Do me your motion.
Sure.
Or just a consent?
Just a consent?
Yes.
Okay.
Good, yeah, good.
Ms. Justice?
I give my consent, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Ms. Legan? Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bauer, appreciate that. So, uh, next on my agenda is, uh, the zoning information, so, we were made aware that, um, there's been a proposal to... So, we were made aware that there's been a proposal to put in eleven-hundred-unit housing development kind of between Manellison Middle School and Seminole Shopping Center. It's been brought to the planning commission, it's going, their design is for multiple phases of this, but it's ended up being like around eleven-hundred housing units, from apartments to houses to a park and so forth. It's not going to happen tomorrow, but, you know, it is proposed, and they're all going through that process. I think what I want to make you aware of is they're requesting access to part of the property from the loop in front of Manellison Middle School. So, as you come into Manellison and go around the traffic circle, the big circle in front, we own that edge, but we own about a twenty-foot right-of-way, and it goes into where the woods are, and the other property starts there. So, the group that is proposing this is probably going to come to us at some point and ask us for a right-of-way in, so they can put an entryway into their property from that point, because they're going to need to have multiple egress points for a development of that size. So, that's one area. The other question comes up is, you know, is it going to be centered for young families, older families, combination of families, and then how might that impact the schools? The county's estimating, you know, it increased by twelve to eighteen students per grade level. You know, that's based off their analysis of it. So, if that's the case, it probably would not impact any one school. The problem is that right where that house development's being proposed is right where the line we separate Madison Heights from Amalon. So, you could have, on one side of the street, it could be Madison Heights, the friends across the street could be going to Amalon due to how it's zoned. Just something we need to consider, it's not there yet, it may not happen, but I want you to be aware of the proposal, so if you start reading things in the paper or articles and stuff like that, that you know where it is. It runs behind Temple Baptist, behind Eighty-Four Lumber, all the way up behind that main corridor on Twenty-Nine, up to the Seminole Shopping Center areas where that development is proposed to be put in. So, I want to be aware of that. And then the other aspect of zoning would be the training center property. You know, the debt was removed and retired the debt, so that area could be developed. I think it's going to be more commercial developments, more than residential development, but we aren't really sure of that yet. That's going to be something else the board needs to keep an eye on over the next few years as that gets developed and how that may impact the school division.
Thank you, Dr. Wells.
Are there any questions regarding that? Okay. So, again, right now it's early stages to just talk, but we need to be aware of it, be able to put a plan in place. Six point zero two deals with meals, and so this year, Ms. Klein is petitioned and done a request that all of our schools receive CEP meals next year, so CEP status, which means that y'all get the free meals for breakfast, lunch, snack, and so forth, that no student will have to pay for meals. That request is at the state level. We feel it'll probably be approved. One of our schools is not, we only have two schools that aren't getting it, that aren't qualified now, and one of those is one-tenth of a point from qualifying for it, and the other one's like a point and a half from qualifying for it. So, we went ahead and applied for that, because it's kind of hard to explain to parents why students at eight schools get free meals, but students at two schools may not. So, we went ahead and applied for that, and we'll know for that here in the near future as to whether it gets approved or not, but we have applied for that, and feel we'll probably end up getting that for the school year. Questions? Okay. All right, six point zero three, school safety. I just want to do a brief, again, I'm not going to go into much detail in public on school safety, but I do want, just to make it aware that we have a crisis intervention plan in place. We review that annually. You get a copy of it every year in August to review. It gets reported to the state. Our local law enforcement agencies and public safety agencies get copies of this plan, and we do review this plan with them. They help review it with us every year, and they do interventions, we talk through it. Also, we have law enforcement into our schools on a regular basis, doing training after hours, where they come in tactical teams and things of that nature, and actually train in our buildings to get a feel for the layout of our buildings. So, if an event did occur, they would have a really good understanding of where to be and the situation, and how to navigate down the hallways and things of that nature. So, I want people to be assured that I can't say nothing's ever going to happen, because I can't say that, but we do have things in place, we have procedures in place that we practice. We're going to do more training this summer, because we've had, the last time we did active shooter training with staff was prior pre-pandemic, and, you know, people have changed, you know, we've had new staff hire since then, and people need to be reminded of what we need to be doing on a regular basis. So, we'll be doing some active shooter training with our staff before, during teacher weeks this year, so they'll make sure they are fully aware of the expectations of that and what to do in case of a catastrophic event of that nature. So, I want you to be aware of that, and I'll be glad to discuss offline with you any questions you may have, but I don't want to discuss certain things in a public setting. Again, you were all given copies of this earlier in the year, and if you don't have a copy, I can give you a flash drive with each school's plan on it. The basic first ninety pages are all the same, and then the last twenty pages are specific to that school based on that school layout and things of that nature. But the first twenty-nine pages are open to the public, they're on our website, and the rest of it is considered off-limits to the public, but if you'd like to discuss that, I'd be glad to discuss that with you.
I'm Dr. Wells. I'd also like to thank you for all the things that you and the school division have done in the past for new board members. It's been quite extensive. Hello, Mr. Kreiser. Sort of surprised there, but they have done a lot of extensive work, and I do appreciate some of you reaching out and talking with Dr. Wells to just make sure and to get caught up on what we are. So, it's always good that we can improve and keep moving forward, but just I appreciate your work and assuring our public. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I was wondering if I could make a suggestion and maybe a request, is maybe in the middle of the summer, if we could have a closed-door session with the members to go over the safety in the schools?
Is that something we can do, Dr. Wells?
I believe we could do a closed session for safety and security purposes, yes.
Okay, if you could check on that for us and see if that's allowed?
And possibly have law enforcement involved in the conversation too, so y'all are aware of their response.
That would be wonderful.
I'll double-check with our attorney to make sure.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So, again, I just want to go through that, you know, we update annually, we do train of law enforcement, we do the drills at school, we do lockdown drills, we do our other drills at schools, we do tabletop drills with our staff, we do training with staff. So, just want to make sure people are aware that we do take this seriously, and it is things we focus on, there are things we focus on. Depending on other questions on that, six point zero four, I want to give you some COVID numbers, and, you know, I know it's been some concern throughout the year, and we got, we were in a pretty good place prior to spring break, and I came in last month, they said numbers were coming up. So, since May first, this is just since May first, so it's what, thirty, what, thirty-nine days, whatever it is, we've had forty-eight staff tests positive for COVID, and a hundred and two students reportedly been positive for COVID. The school hardest hit percentage-wise was Eland Elementary School. In fact, we were almost ready to close Eland down this week for three days, because they had so many last weekend, this week, because they had first and second grade staff out last week, and fourth and fifth grade staff out this week. I know y'all have mentioned to me concerns about, you know, having to cover classes and parents and other people having to cover classes, things of that nature. Central office staff has had to cover classes, administrators have had to cover classes. We've been all hands on deck to make sure schools stayed open, because I know that's what we needed to do for our students. However, when we do that, it does cause us to have to pull from other areas in order to stay open. So, just be aware that, yes, we did manage to keep that school open this week, because we thought it was really, well, that's SOL testing and end-of-year events, we thought it'd be very good for that school to keep it open, but if it hadn't been for the staff up there's willingness to jump in and cover, it probably wouldn't have happened. So, I just want to thank them for what they did, but make you aware that, you know, hopefully we're at the end of this, and moving into next year into the fall, we won't have to have these conversations about COVID again, but just know that we're doing everything we can to keep the schools open, and part of that means people have to do, be pulled from their regular duties to make sure we can keep the doors open. So, any questions on the COVID?
Thank you for sharing those numbers. It does help to make sure that we're aware of staffing. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And I believe the last thing on my list is the student suspension report, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Board, any questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Wells.
Thank you.
We're at eight dot oh one, instruction?
Seven.
Oh, seven dot oh one, finance, sorry.
That's okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board. Before you tonight are your May financial reports. From the revenue side, we are receiving our revenue as anticipated in both our operating and child nutrition budgets. We have been monitoring our state allocations, and they have been consistent with the calc tools that have progressed throughout the year. While we are awaiting the final state calc tool that does come in June, after the General Assembly Special Session, the state did provide an overall distribution last week that is in line with our projected budget. While we still have one more month, you'll have your normal June state allocations. We will also be recognizing the July and August sales tax, because that's in arrears, and that will be recognized in this fiscal year. On the expenditure side, it's pretty much the same report, I feel like I've given the same one every month. We're in line with those few exceptions. Overall, if you look at the utilities and totality is with the heat, electric, and water, when you put those together, the utility budget, we will be within the budget for those three areas. One may be over, it will be excess in the others. The two areas we continue to see the overages are the legal services and the fuel costs, but we have been able to absorb those with some of the other existing lines, and both of those areas we address in the budget for next year. Of course, with some of the rising costs, we still would have to keep that on our radar for next year, and we had discussed some contingency plans if those costs do not go down. On the object code summary report, I just wanted to bring to your attention on page four, that under the CARES funding, the available balance was only three thousand eight hundred and twenty-one as of the end of May, so that supplemental appropriation that was presented earlier tonight, that was giving that additional funding to carry us out throughout the year. Overall, even with the challenges we have faced with those higher costs, we are finishing the year off fiscally sound and in a good situation. Do you have any questions?
No, I can see what our projections are at this point on the sheet. Do you have any thoughts about end-of-the-year projections by the time we get to the end of June?
Yes, we've been doing some.
Carryover funds, I guess?
Yeah, we've been doing some calculations, and again, we're, you have to factor in that you will be, we'll be recognizing expenditures that'll be paid in July that are actually from the prior year, so putting those, it's definitely not a definite, and then we're projecting what those sales taxes are going to be in July and August, but we're looking around the one point five million.
Thank you. One more question, how's enrollment looking, ending up the year with where we started?
I have a report on that, too. I apologize, I have a spreadsheet on that. It is coming in line with what was on the revised, the latest calc tool.
If you can't find it, you can send it to me.
Okay, I can do that. I have it, it's just in here.
Certainly, yeah, okay, thank you. I'm just wondering how it was when, how we ended up.
Okay.
Board members, any questions for finance? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Laconich.
I believe that's me. And Ms. Laconich, the report that I have is thirty-seven eighty-three for ADM and thirty-seven ninety-two for enrollment.
Yes, that's what was provided in the, may, I thought you were asking about comparisons to the start of the year.
Yes, I was. Okay. All right, we're down to eight dot oh one, grading?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Madam Chair, members of the board, it was requested in April that we bring to the board information regarding the grading policy and the grading regulation. Just as a reminder, the school board's responsibility is in regards to the policy, and then based on that policy, the superintendent approves and forms a committee to develop the regulations, and then that committee provides that information to the superintendent, and the superintendent provides approval of that. So, based on the policy that we currently have for our grading regulation, that was first approved by the board in April seventh, nineteen ninety-four, and that has not changed. That policy remains as is on its first approval. The regulation, that again, was reviewed and with the board at that first initial on April seventh, nineteen ninety-four, and the first change of the regulation, that initial change that was made, was done October eighth of two thousand and fifteen, and that was based on the recommendations of a committee to move to a ten-point grading scale. So, from nineteen ninety-four until two thousand and fifteen, our grading regulation actually stayed the same. It wasn't until two thousand and twenty, March two thousand and twenty, when we closed the schools due to COVID-nineteen and the pandemic, that the grading guidelines from VDOE required us to be able to adapt our grading procedures and regulations for seniors graduating that year, and that was due to the school closure, so we updated the regulations at that time. After the first nine weeks of two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, the school year, we pulled the committee back together again after that first nine weeks to make sure that we were in line with what was needed in the classrooms as what they were seeing based on COVID. So, we revised at that time, and after the first nine weeks, and then the board was actually updated December tenth of two thousand and twenty on those initial guidelines from the state. And those, we had two goals that the state provided to us that we were required to do. The first one was to ensure equitable grading procedures for our students across the division, and then to provide continuity between face-to-face instruction and remote learning. And so, the committee developed that, brought it to the superintendent, which was approved, and the board was updated on December tenth. The next time that the grading committee actually met was to update based on the regulations and requirements from VDOE guidelines and guidance on the return-to-learn requirements which came out. The committee met on July twenty-first, the changes were made and updated on July twenty-third. Again, the process that we had used in the past was after the first nine weeks, when the teachers were able to go through those grading changes, we met with the committee again, the board, those changes were made, and the board was updated at the November fifth, two thousand and twenty-one board meeting on that. The board actually at that meeting asked for clarification on the grading changes in regards to that, and that was brought back to the board December of two thousand and twenty-one, and that was specific to how the fifty, nothing at the end of each nine weeks, was counted in as a fifty, that was brought back, and how was that either detrimental or supportive to students, and how were teachers responding to that? And so, that information was brought to the board December, I believe it was sixth, I think, of two thousand and twenty-one. In April, the board requested information on our current regulation, and then the options available to ensure high expectations for all students. So, we reconvene the committee again, selected three specific options that the committee pulled together, and we're presenting that to you tonight on June ninth. Once that's presented to you, those new regulations and the discussion that you have tonight, that will be brought to the superintendent in July, and those regulations will have changed for implementation to be ready August two thousand and twenty-second. That's the timeline for the policy and the grading regulations that we currently have. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Maddox, who is our committee chair for our grading committee in the division. Mr. Maddox?
Hey, thank you, Dr. Norman. Madam Chair, members of the board, at your place, you have a memo to the superintendent from the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two grading committee with suggested changes to the grading regulations located in section I, code IKC dash R of the Amherst County Public School Policy Manual. Before I get started, I just want to thank publicly all of the folks on the grading committee, some of which are here. They just did a remarkable job, meeting and having the discussion, so that we could bring these suggestions to the superintendent. So, we did meet on May thirteenth, and we reviewed the grading regulation document. You should have a copy of that document at your place. You should have a copy of that document at your place. The suggested changes to the regulations are in bold print. And then if it was, if a committee requested for something to be deleted, it is designated with a strike through. Be glad to give you time if you want to go through that now or if you want me to go through each individual change as to what you would like for me to do.
Board, you can tell me your pleasure, but I've had- No, I think we're ready.
Okay, so what we did is we came up with three options. Option number one is approving the grading regulations suggested from a grading committee as written. So the document that you have at your place, that's option one, the changes that are in that document. Okay, option two, when you look at the memo, is approve the grading regulations suggested by the grading committee as written with the exception of the final lowest grade policy. On option two, we would change the final lowest grade policy. Paper's sticking together. From the process where we have a 50 at the end of the first semester for each nine weeks and a 40, because that's what's in the original document, a 40 for the second semester, that would change in option two, the lowest final grade earned by a student at the end of the nine-week grading period would be first nine weeks, lowest grade would be a 50. The second nine weeks, the lowest grade would be a 40. And then third and fourth nine weeks, a student would earn, earn the grade that they received. That's option two. Option three is approve the grading regulations suggestions from the grading committee as written with the exception again of the final grade section. To lower, to put the lowest final grade earned by a student at the end of the nine-week grading period for the first nine weeks would be a 50. And then for the lowest, for the second, third and fourth nine weeks, a student would receive the grade as they receive, or the grade they earned. So your first option is the, the document that you have with the changes. The second option is changing the final grade from a 50 the first semester and a 40 the second, okay, to to a 50 for the first nine weeks, a 40 for the second nine weeks, and then third and fourth, again, would be the grade the student earned. And then option three follows along that same lines, but the student would only, the final grade would only be a 50 in that first nine weeks.
Is that it, Mr. Maddox?
Yes, ma'am. We also, just to let you know, Ms. Smith created a survey with the above document that was sent out to each school administration's administrator and to get the faculty feedback. So this same document was sent out in a survey to the teachers. And you should have those results at your place as well.
Yes, and, and I know that's quite extensive and I appreciate that, but I'm going to be honest, that wasn't sent to us ahead of time. So I don't know that any of the board members have reviewed that yet.
Okay.
Board members, I think at this time, I'd like to hear some of your thoughts. You're welcome to make motions, but maybe we need to do some discussion first.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Burke?
I would like to see our students get the grades that they earn. And I also, you know, would agree with leniency for the teachers, maybe throw out their lowest grade at the end of the marking period. You know, if a child is having issues at home or is struggling, you know, helping that student, working with that student. But I think it's time we need to move forward, get past COVID and start having our students earn their actual grade.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair. So if, if the student doesn't do any assignments at all, like that first nine, I mean, there's no zeros, it's all, it would be just a 50, I mean, is it?
They, yeah, they would get the zeros, but the end of the nine weeks, the lowest grade would be a 50. And we discussed this back in that December meeting and I gave you the examples. It just shows you how detrimental, even if a student gets a 30 or a 35 and, and then trying to come back over the next three, nine weeks, you know, grades are supposed to be what that student knows at, at the end. What's that knowledge? What's, what's that mastery content at the end?
Sure.
And so, you know, that's kind of what we want to get to.
But if, and that's, the only hiccup I have is like if you had somebody that didn't put up any effort. I get like the learning loss piece, trying to start off and, you know, but if you had a child that just, I'm not going to do this, I'm not going to do that, and zero, zero, didn't turn any assignment, we would still just give them the, and I get they're in a hole, but like at some point, it's like-
Still failure.
Yeah. Well, a 50 still, yeah, absolutely.
It's still failure. I mean, that's, you know, I think you have to think about the idea that we have a hundred point system. 10 points is for an A, 10 for B, 10 for C, 10 for D, and 60 for an F, right? So it, the math has always been, doesn't make sense. Like, you understand what I'm saying, right?
Yes, yeah.
So the idea behind it was to, if they did not have a good nine weeks, to give them a fighting chance to, to pass that course, if they came back and did what they were supposed to. Because if they don't come back and do what they're supposed to, they're not going to-
They're going to fail anyway.
And the idea that grades for some of these kids are their motivators is, is, is not true, right? You give kids zeros, they keep getting zeros, right? That's not what motivates these kids that are failing anyway, right? What, what motivates kids that are failing is having something that is relevant and meaningful to them that they're doing in their classroom. So I think you've been given three options here, three things to look at. I think you've been given a lot of data as to what the, the teachers are thinking. I think it's worth, if y'all want to have the discussion, that's, that's good. But I think we need to be able to give Dr. Wells some, some direction come July so he can-
Certainly. I know that I had wanted to this on our agenda so that we could have some clarification and start school on a certain page. Mr. Bryzer, did you have anything else?
No, no, no.
I'd like to just make a comment off of yours. I understand there are extenuating circumstances and some students do have a nine weeks that maybe isn't the best. Sometimes things happen in their life, sometimes they just sort of go off the deep end themselves and have to pull, pull it back together. I get that. At the bottom of this grading sheet where we have three options, there is a paragraph at the very end, I'm going to read it. Amherst County Public Schools will continue to work with students on an individual basis if extenuating circumstances exist, causing a fluctuation in a student's grade that is not reflective of their ability level and previous performance. I believe that says it all. I don't believe that we need to say, I'm going to give a student who doesn't do any work a 50. I have looked at the grading regulation and there is a section in here under zeros. Parents will be notified when student work is not completed using the following modes of communication. First notification, email. Second notification, a phone call. I'll be the first to say, if I try to call a parent, it usually takes three or four times to make sure I reach them. That's a lot of phone calls. Third notification, parent conference. So I am putting, you are, we are putting a requirement on our teachers for every single student that says, I'm not going to do my work and I'm going to turn in a zero. That teacher has to make email contact. The next day they come in and they make a zero because they didn't put forth any effort, I have to call home. Third time the kid walks to the door and he doesn't do any work and I put a zero down in my grade book, I now have to call me a parent conference. That's for one child. Elementary teachers have, what, 20 students, some 25? High school students, what do they have, 80, 150? So the onus on a teacher to do all of this, I mean, this is new. I can't imagine a teacher doing that, knowing that a student brought in nothing, but yet they're required to do that and then they have to put a 50 on that kid's report card. I have all sympathy in the world when a student has extenuating circumstances. As a teacher myself, I would work double hard. I would bring them in, I would tutor them, I would let them retake exams. As long as they wanted to put in the effort, as long as they wanted to learn, they always had a second chance. And as you said, mastery, we work towards mastery. I think our teachers work towards mastery. If we look at some of these options and you say, okay, if they had a beginning of the nine weeks poor and they're going to get a 50, but the last grading period, it's going to be their grade, what's the difference? They could have a parent die at the end. So why am I going to select one that says, okay, if you screwed up the first part of the year, but the end of the year you messed up, I'm not going to do anything for those kids. There's no consistency here.
Well, I think when they come-
Excuse me just a moment. And when I look at this, there's more to it than just the zero. I see some strikeouts in here that takes away things. I'm going to give you an example. There's a strikeout, if a teacher chooses to drop the lowest grade, it cannot include the nine weeks assessment or semester exam. So previously, we're saying that a teacher can drop the lowest grade, but they're just not going to drop those big exams. So if you strike that out, the committee's decided to strike that out, the, the result of that is saying to teachers, you may drop a nine weeks assessment, you may drop a semester exam. But there is nothing in this regulation that provides consistency. So as a teacher, I could drop your final exam, but I might not drop yours. There's no consistency. There's no expectation for consistency across grade levels or content area. So I think some of the strikeouts that I'm seeing in here is just opening it up for interpretation. So I think there could be more work done to shore it up.
Okay.
But, and I'm sorry, I'm passionate about this. I just, it- Mr. Terry, you said that you support students receiving grades they have earned. I've heard that from Mrs. Burke. I support students receiving grades that they've earned. I do not support telling teachers that they have to do an interim, they have to have a conference every nine weeks and that every time a student doesn't do their work, they have to be held to that regulation. I believe teachers are professionals, they're going to call, they need to call, they need to contact. They can do that weekly. If they see a problem, they can call the parents, they can contact the parents. I just don't understand why we have to put something so strenuous, just right there for teachers. I can't imagine how they would respond when to me, Amherst County Public Schools will continue to work with students on an individual basis if extenuating circumstances exist, causing a fluctuation in a student's grade that is not reflective of their ability and previous performance. We have a heart. We care about our kids and we can do that without straining and our, our teachers and without telling our kids they don't have to work. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm done. I apologize. Any, anybody else?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair?
Ms. Gussis?
Okay. So when I, you know, the first question, you know, that I ask when, when we consider education, is what are we preparing? Are we, we're imparting knowledge, yes, but we're giving growth opportunities for them to apply that knowledge, develop life skills that they then take into the work environment. What do grades matter beyond high school? Well, some of the things that that tells our workers and our employers is that this student has achieved progress. They've engaged with their environment in the educational situation. They have a work ethic to overcome the obstacles they are going to face because life is full of obstacles and they don't get a break for it, not usually. And it helps to evaluate their prior knowledge. So the purpose of a grade is to provide feedback on academic, academic progress, student engagement, work ethic and knowledge. Without accurate grades for each quarter, we can't measure the level of success or progress. Now, let's say as, as a student, I was one of those students that was sick all the time. I would miss three weeks of school, every fall, every spring, and I had to make up that work. I had to meet with my teachers, I had teachers that would meet with me. And it was hard work, but it developed in me, that work ethic and that confidence to know, I can overcome the difficulties that come my way that are out of my control, but I have control to approach those and overcome them. So I agree with many of the things that have been said here. So if a student has a zero, we'll assume from outside influences, maybe a parent died. I talked with a parent this week where that was a situation. And so they had zeros for that first quarter. And we can offer them, I believe, and I believe our teachers are doing this, offer them an opportunity to say, get together, I have a nine-week assessment here, here's a study guide, I'll work with you if you're available, let's then take this test in nine weeks. So giving students an opportunity to overcome that situation, I see is very helpful for preparing them for the world and for showing them a growth model and a growth system. So that is one of the things that I had to say, this, so I see zeros as very detrimental. It's setting our kids up for failure. That's not how our world operates. And then I agree with the overburdening of teachers. Oh gosh, I have a lot here. I, I had an issue with, due to the continuation of learning loss associated with COVID-19, the lowest final grade earned by a student at the end of the nine weeks grading period will be as follows. I don't want our kids to be defined by COVID, that each year they're like, okay, yeah, I'm behind from COVID. Yes, they are, but it's what we do with it now and the resources we give them. I, yeah, so those are some of the things. So lots of discussion. So I am disturbed by this regulation that we have before us.
Is there anyone else?
Well, I mean, I'm just, I was trying to listen to what you said and, but here's my own thing. I, I, I would not want to get rid of interrupts. Oh, I thought you said that.
Oh, no, I just said teachers already have to give interrupts.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, good. I was thinking, no, that's, that's a necessity.
That's a given.
And parent-teacher conferences are a necessity.
Yes.
And really, anything that the teacher can do to help the student get those grades up is a necessity.
Yes.
I, very well, I have to do it my own, so it might be, be a burden. We know there are different circumstances and reasons why our kids get failing grades. But I think we're trying to address them as best we can. I wouldn't say we're putting a burden on anybody because that, the teacher's burden, it lies on them to get that student's success, to be successful. At the bottom, at the end of the day. Not necessarily that the student is not putting forth an effort, you know, just don't want to do anything. And then back to the post-COVID conversation, that wasn't just in Amherst County. We, we realized that learning suffered a deficit during this situation. And it's going to take a couple of years, great years to come out of it or not. I think teachers are doing all they can, but we can't just say that that didn't exist and that did not put people behind. It put the smartest of kids behind. People came here and told us about it. So that's, that's a reality that we're all living with. We, we, I understand we want to get past it, I'm good with that, I'm past it, but you, you have to understand that those who got trapped in it and suffered great situations, it's going to take them a minute to get out of it. So we don't have to keep, I understand, we don't have to keep saying because of COVID, because of COVID, but let me tell you, because of COVID.
Anyone else? I'd like to just look at for a moment our grading policy. I believe I have the right one. Teacher shall be responsible for the grading and evaluation of student achievement.
Which one is that?
Our policy, not our regulation, our policy.
Pull that stuff here.
Our policy.
I get it.
Anybody else?
I'm good. What were you saying?
Our policy. I was just reading the first line of it. Teacher shall be responsible for the grading and evaluation of student achievement. Ms. Justice.
Madam Chair, I believe that it's fairly explicit that it appears to give the freedom and discretion for our teachers to perform this. And that seems good.
Okay, can I say something real quick? Because you don't want to just give carte blanche to say this is, you can give grades any way you want to. I don't think that's what that means.
No.
That's what she just said, though.
That's what our policy says.
Right, but what I'm saying is to interpret it to mean that any teacher can decide ever how they want to give grades is okay. Right? I don't think that's the right interpretation.
That's not.
That's what you said. You said it should be up to the teacher to decide how you give grades. That's not, that's, if you do that, you are going to have 40 different teachers giving 40 different types of grades, and y'all are going to have a mess on your hands.
Dr. Arnold, our policy states that. That's why it was read.
Right, no, I understand.
And I understand your comment, and I understand consistency. You heard me say that earlier. However, if we are telling teachers what kind of grade to put in that grade book when a student isn't bringing any work in, that teacher's autonomy has disappeared.
I understand what you just said. I was responding to what she said. Okay? To what Ms. Justice said.
I understand. That was the point I was trying to make, so I appreciate you acknowledging that.
Thank you.
So I think-
Madam Chair.
Ms. Justice.
May I respond?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. I believe there's a misunderstanding of what I was trying to communicate. So in our regulation, I see some already existing, lots of steps. But that regulation is, as you have said, is imposing extra, it's defining how a teacher can accomplish that and taking away their discretion for their class. I think we can give guidelines, which we have in our regulation. And that fulfills our policy here, but when we step beyond and we say, you've got this square, this square, this square, this square, and if they miss all four squares here, they're still going to get this, we are interfering with the teacher's discretion. And so that is-
So I think I understood you. I think I understood what you were saying. If you said I had a misunderstanding, I understood what you said.
I don't feel understood, but that's okay. Thank you. We're big kids.
Okay, if there's no other comments, I think we need to give some guidance so that superintendent will know how to move forward. We've been presented with three options, option one, two, and three. Is there a motion?
Ms. Thompson, I don't, there's, I think what you want to be able to do is to give Dr. Wells an idea as to what direction he needs to go, because if you don't like any of the options, he needs to know, should we start looking at a different set of options? As opposed to voting on something, because that's something that Dr. Wells is going to have to determine later.
Board, is there a consensus that you would like to accept either option one, two, or three?
Madam Chair, I would like to be able to have another option that's more cohesive on what our board is saying today, where students, you know, get their grades that they earn. We work with students that are struggling case-by-case basis. You know, a child has, you know, a parent that's sick, or the child is sick or going through issues. We work with that child, but not just passing out 50s like candy. We need something that's more consistent on how the board feels.
And I also agree with Mrs. Ligon to her point, which was my point as well, so that she knows, is that use of interims and that use of conferencing, that use of contacting parents is vital. So to be able to include that to where it's not overly cumbersome, but it is a high expectation for our teachers, I think would be beneficial to our kids as well as the extenuating circumstances. Mr. Terry, haven't heard from you.
So of the three options we do have, if we chose one of those, I would be leaning toward option three. I respect the opinion of the rest of the board, so I'm open for other options if they exist.
Mr. Rossi.
We didn't get here overnight. Obviously, COVID did change a lot of things. As we started to progress out of COVID, I find it hard to think that we're going to make things better by instantly changing things back to the way they need to be. I don't know if if all students are prepared to do what we're ready to ask them to do, coming back, and not have some difficulty. As a person that had challenges, a zero or a big goose egg is something that will affect you, and it discourages you. And I wasn't the one to wait till it got that far. Luckily, I had teachers and counselors that said, hey, you're starting to slip. What's going on at home? What can we do to make this better? And that was important to have that backing. However, there was a grade or two that may have been changed. And it's not that I deserved it, but I earned it, if you know what I'm saying. I put in the work. Even though I didn't get all the way, I was putting forth the effort. And I don't want some of these kids that are so far back to be so discouraged if we just said, you get what you get, and that's it. And I like the option of teachers that have that bond with that child to be able to make that decision with the parents, maybe with a counselor, but to just say, you get what you get, and that's it. I don't think that's going to be the right way to move forward out of COVID. Now, I'm not sure on A, B, or C is the right answer. I don't know. I don't know where our kids are. I haven't seen any of the grades. I don't know our teacher, what the teachers are challenging. I don't know what they're facing this year, what they're going to face this year. But I don't want to say right now that we have to pick A, B, or C, because there is a lot of good advice up here. And there's a lot of good advice out there, and I think, I don't want to make a hasty decision without knowing where our students are today, where they're going to be tomorrow, and next year. Some kids are going to need help, and are we going to take them down because we're not offering them every possibility to move forward? I just, I don't want to do that. I don't want to make that decision. And that's one of my biggest concerns coming out of COVID. We're there, but we need to get out of there.
And if I can ask just for clarification, I'm right there with you in knowing that we need to work with our students, and we don't want, you know, the zero hanging over their head. We want them to have an opportunity to make it up.
Yes.
I would agree with you 100%. I even think there's opportunities when you drop some zeros, because everybody has a bad day. But if you've got some work that goes around that as a skeleton, and you drop some of your lowest grades, then that one's not hurting you.
Correct.
And what you have done shines. Where I'm struggling and where I don't feel I can support is giving a student a 50 for not doing anything.
That is correct.
And having no intentions of working on it. And at the high school level, especially if you are in a sequential course, and you have four semesters and you have two zeros, and then you have good grades the second two, you really only know half the coursework. So, you know, just assuming that they finish fine doesn't mean that they've mastered the course. They're going to be going to the next class with only half the knowledge. So I think giving them incentives to bring up their zero, to bring up their low grade, to give them the supports they need, give them the extra time and the opportunity is, to me, what's most beneficial for them as well as their future in other classes. You know, if they've missed assignments, if they've missed work and they move on, they're going to be just as lost the next year as well. My focus would be on the education, not on the grade. So I know we still need to give direction. So I am going to ask, is there any board member that wants to give directions for options one, two, or three? Or do you wish for the superintendent to bring something else back?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt option one, but we modify the language to omit the zeros and include the struck-out sentence. If a teacher chooses to drop the lowest grade, it cannot include the nine weeks assessment or semester exam.
What was the recommendation of the committee? I think I've got it caught up here. Which one of these options?
Just a moment. We have a motion on the floor.
Oh, sorry.
And we're not in discussion yet.
Excuse me.
All right, Ms. Justice, I'm going to make sure that I understand what you're saying. You're saying adopt option one, which is the regulations.
Yes.
But you want to remove, can you show me where?
Yes.
Is it on page two where it says zeros?
Yes. We would, we would omit zeros on page two.
That entire paragraph or just the bolded?
That entire paragraph. And the struck-out part in the second paragraph on page two would remain in the policy and not be struck out. And on, under homework assignments should be meaningful to change immediate to timely.
I don't see where that is. So if we go to page two where it says zeros, the only new part is what's in bold. That was the teacher requirements. Do you want to strike out all of it? Students are expected to complete all assigned work. When not completed by the deadline, established assigned work must be completed at another assigned time or outside the school day. Do you want to strike all of that?
Yes, I believe that's already reflected in the top paragraph where it says gradebook requirements.
Okay.
Does option one, okay, I'm in the middle of a motion. Okay, so if we struck out this, can I cancel my motion?
Can I suggest that you shouldn't be making a motion on, y'all are trying to give guidance to-
Okay, just a discussion. Okay, all right, good, so I can-
Yeah, so you don't, don't get caught up in the technicality of motions. You're trying to give guidance.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I suggest that we take some more time to work on this and bring it back next meeting.
And I sort of agree with you, Mrs. Burke, in that I think we've already given
Yes.
guidance based on our comments.
I think, I think so.
So I have taken some notes, and I'll get the transcripts.
And maybe bring something-
I can work with the grading committee, and in July, we can bring something back to you for discussion.
I mean, because we've had a lot of discussion, but I believe we're pretty much on the same page. Okay, thank you. That makes it easier. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have. Mr. Neighbors.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a couple items for you tonight. The first is at your place is our FFY 2020 Special Education Performance Report. This is our special education report card from the state, for lack of a better phrase there. I wanted you all to be able to take a look at that, and specifically what this is, is a data reporting from 14 indicators that we are required to collect data on, report to the state each and every year. The data you're looking at in this packet, depending upon the indicator we're talking about, is either from 1920 or 2021. It says data cycles that different parts of this and different indicators are on. The overview of this is we are very pleased with our report card at this point. We're not straight A, which is what we want to be, but we are getting there. We're doing a good job all in all. I want to call attention to a couple of key pieces. The first page there, indicator one and two, and just giving a lot of kudos to our secondary staff working with students. These numbers that we have here for graduation and dropouts are not just favorable from a state standpoint, but also looking at our sister divisions in the immediate area, really doing a fantastic job of getting our students through and out. As I said before, we want those numbers to be 100% and 0%, those are our goals. But I always like to see that we're meeting state targets and showing improvement year over year. The rest of the report as it goes through, it hits on a lot of different areas. We talked quite a bit about participation and performance as it relates to standards of learning assessments, proficiency. In those particular areas, it also includes students who are participating in alternative assessment structures for this particular data set because of the number of students that participated in this given year, which again was impacted by some of that COVID piece that we've been talking about. We didn't have quite enough to be able to represent that as a data point, but ultimately, a lot of good things happening there. Not 100%, not exactly where we want to be, but certainly moving in a very positive direction. Our preschool outcomes, our preschool environments, different components that we look at to assess where students are when they come into our early childhood programs and come out. Again, we are meeting and exceeding state standards across the board with that, but we always have that room to continue to grow. We're doing incredible things with early childhood programs. Ms. Julie Albert has worked with that staff to put in a lot of wonderful things, a lot of wonderful supports, not just for our students, but also for our teachers in those programs the last several years. And ultimately, we're feeling good about our direction there and continue to be strong. Indicator eight is one that here in Amherst, we are extremely proud of. You'll notice as you look at other report cards in our immediate area, there are very few divisions that reach state expectation levels on parent involvement. We are consistently exceeding the state threshold for that. So not just getting feedback from our parents, but getting positive feedback from our parents. This is information that doesn't come directly to us. They actually receive a piece of paper from us that goes directly to the state where they provide that feedback without us really knowing what it is they're reporting. But always great to see, not only we have involvement, but also a very positive feedback in general from our families. Couple of the pieces in there, more regulatory in nature in regards to timelines, how we identify students, whether or not there are concerns related to discipline, providing transition services. One piece I do want to call attention is actually the very back of the packet, our indicator 14, post-secondary outcomes. This is something consistently where we have been meeting or exceeding state standards for the last several years. We are really seeing a big hit from what's been going on the last couple of years and where this data really lives with that impact of COVID on this particular indicator. We are expecting this to come back to levels that we're used to and meeting and exceeding those state targets. But ultimately, an area that we are going to redouble our efforts in for next year, ensuring that we're doing everything we can to ensure students are successfully transitioning onto whatever their goals might be. So all in all, certainly work left to be done, but very, very proud of our staff, our students, the work they've been putting in, even despite the fact that this data is being pulled from the last couple of school years. We know quite a bit's going on there. We're still getting what we would expect to in regards to how the state views us and what they want us to be doing in special education. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, but all I said there, very, very pleased with where we are at this point and being able to move forward from here.
Mr. Neighbors, quick question on indicator 14. I know you said that we are not doing as well as we had in the past, and we haven't met the state targets. How are folks- How are folks around the state doing?
This is the area around the state where.
Is this typical? Are we, I guess, are we aligned with where other folks are around us?
We are very comparable. And ultimately, what hits us here, if a student hasn't enrolled in a university or community college, if a student hasn't initiated a job placement somewhere, if they haven't moved on to what would typically be available. We have a lot of students who participate in support programs in a typical year where they weren't the last couple of years, but a lot of folks around the state, especially in our immediate area, saw a pretty big downturn with this one particular indicator.
Do you have any rationale as to why?
So ultimately, no, I'm sorry, trying to talk to Cecil there. Ultimately, for this, I think we did have an impact from, look, I'm going to move again, students not either having opportunities. We did have students that were moving into other fields as opposed to going to college. We noticed that. This is actually a survey where Ms. Begley, who's one of our teachers at the high school, picks up the phone and calls each of our graduates from the previous year and interviews them basically about what they're doing and where they are. The feedback she was getting from that is a lot of students were kind of waiting and see what would happen. They didn't feel either safe going out and thinking about this really just coming out of COVID, they either weren't going out to college campuses and things along those lines where they decided to wait a little bit before making some of those changes. So fully expect, as we have been years past, for this number to rebound in the future.
And in this report, while it does talk about post-secondary outcomes, does it include jobs or the workforce of military as well?
It does, absolutely. And it breaks out a couple of those categories separately, and then they have one at the end that kind of brings it all together with what that looks like.
Thank you. Any other questions, Board? Okay, thank you, Ms. Neighbors.
Thank you. All right, I think I have the next bullet as well. Wanted to give the board an update on where we stand with Medicaid reimbursement. Ms. Berg, see ya. So unfortunately, Ms. Berg, we are still working with DMAS. We love our contacts at DMAS, they're very nice people, but they keep telling us, no, not quite yet. We're still in the same boat as a lot of others in the state. I think that a lot has been put on hold until we get to some of the expansion components that I'm going to talk about here in just a moment. Everything is up to date. We have verified about a million times in the last three weeks that they don't require anything else from us. Ms. Libicace, who works in my office, has gotten on a first-name basis with most of the people that answer the phone at DMAS, just to see where we are in process. They assure us we're still there, we're in line, they just haven't given us that go-ahead just yet. I do want to note for the board there and why we've been so pushy about it, if we aren't approved by July 1st, we have to wait another quarter cycle in regards to what that looks like and wouldn't be able to initiate this plan until November. We wouldn't be approved until that point to start reimbursement for Medicaid. So we are continuing to be very, very pushy to try to get that go-ahead before we hit July 1st.
How do our chances look for that, really quick, sorry?
So we've been promised that we are high on the list. I've been pushing to figure out where we are in line with that. I think we're still behind divisions that actually have been approved previously and are waiting on, I forget what the exact word is, but being approved again essentially to be able to do it. Once they finish those out, they're going to go through new applications. I think the fact that we start with A is going to help us in that regard. I think there's some logic to that, but ultimately, we've been told we're high on the list and as soon as they can get through some of those other divisions, we'll be, we'll be next with them. So crossing fingers, but I'm confident that we're going to hear before that July 1st date. So laying out what this would look like, regardless of when that comes through, we want to have a plan in place, we want to be ready to go. We have procured everything we need from an administrative system standpoint. So the system we utilize to track our documents for 504 plans and IEPs has an add-on for that where we can actually track all of our data related to Medicaid. And then that company, PCG, actually works with us to produce the reports that get sent to DMAS so that we can get that reimbursement. So they really do help us with a lot of those administrative components. But as a part of this, I've outlined there as in a bulleted list, what we are going to target for reimbursable expenses in this first year. There's very little that we've left off the list. I'm kind of getting to what we have left off at this point. But ultimately, as we've gone through and analyzed each of these areas, we felt like we can build this in within existing structures. We're not putting more on staff than they are able to incorporate into what they already do. An example of that is for occupational therapists, we're actually transitioning from what they traditionally do with tracking data, monitoring student progress, and they're migrating that onto this system so they're not duplicating work. And we really did try to look at that for each individual discipline area as we were going through. And for all of these, we felt like we could accomplish that without adding significant burden to any of these one particular groups of staff. The one where that was not the case, and I wanted to make special mention of this, for our speech-language pathologists, ultimately, the reality with Medicaid reimbursement in schools has traditionally been, speech-language pathology is where you make a lot of the money, for lack of a better phrase. That's where a lot of the services occur, that's where a lot of time is spent, and most of those students, a good chunk of those students, I should say, are typically eligible under Medicaid. The concern we have there for every student I add in regards to collecting data and reporting and doing all those different pieces, that represents a certain amount of time each week, which takes away their ability to provide services during that time. And as we were roughing out, what we felt like was relatively conservative estimate of what that would look like for our speech-language pathologists, we reached a tipping point where it would be impossible not to look at an additional speech-language pathology physician. Those are few and far between nowadays. They have been historically, they certainly are now, more than likely would require us to contract for another speech-language pathology position, which would all but eliminate whatever benefit we would get monetarily on the back end with that. I've outlined some of that there on the second page of the memo. Ultimately, kind of coming to a place where we're not spending money just to be able to reimburse the same amount of money.
Okay, quick question.
Please.
If we do have to outsource for the speech path, can't we just have the speech path bill that students Medicaid or their famous program directly so we're not out any out-of-pocket?
So ultimately, we can contract or have them bill for the amount of time they're spending with students, depending upon how many of those students are eligible. We wouldn't be able to reimburse the full expense for that, so we wouldn't be able to put in, it costs us as much to contract and we'd get that much money back in reimbursement. So there would still be kind of that arithmetic to it, that balance to it. And we did try to take that into account as we were going through. That is really the one area, as we've been going through with it, that the amount of time, because of the caseload sizes with speech pathologists, that's really where it became overly burdensome from staff and we'd had to look at really singling out, really, really bringing down some of those caseloads that they're working with for right now. Obviously, there's domino effects there as we add new staff in, we have to divide up schools in a different way, coordinating services, it can create more travel, there's kind of a lot of things that follow with that and some of those circumstances. Ultimately, I think what helps mitigate the effect of not going down that particular road is what I've explained at the very end of the memo there, the potential expansion for 2022-23. This is something that they are hoping comes online July 1st. There's still some approval process that they're going through at the state level to verify this, but the big piece of this and what's important for everyone to understand is the requirement has always been for reimbursement in the school setting, student has to be identified with a disability and receive services through an IEP. This expansion moves away from that, so students that meet Medicaid criteria, regardless of identification as it relates to a disability or having an IEP, can be billed, we can bill for services provided to them. So it really does open this up considerably for a lot of more students, A, to receive services, but then also for us to be able to bill and collect reimbursement for those services provided. Another important component of the expansion is including school counselors as approved providers. So when they're spending time with students, having sessions with students, working with them, those then become opportunities for us to be able to bill Medicaid for that and be able to pull down some reimbursement along those lines. Ultimately, what we hope that means is that we'll be able to procure additional resources to bring into schools to work with students. And there's even a scenario and talking through with Ms. Laconce and others, where we might be able to add positions such as licensed counselors that could be in the school and literally everything they do is reimbursable, where they are essentially paying for themselves as we go through year over year. So really hopeful that this expansion goes through the way that they hope it will. I feel like this is going to be a big piece for us as a division to bring more resources in and be able to have minimal effect on the overall budget to be able to do that. Anytime we can use money like this to be able to add services for students, obviously that's what we want to be doing. We feel like the expansion is going to give us a great pathway to be able to do that. Please.
Okay, sorry. Did you see recently, one of our schools over in Nova, I believe, they're actually bringing in counselors through the kids' laptops now so they can receive services online?
Yeah.
And I actually spoke with somebody locally who works for a company that does that, and they're working on bringing that and accepting Medicaid right now.
Yeah, yeah. And that was one piece, and that's kind of something that's unfolded. If there are any silver linings with COVID, there are a couple of things like this where telehealth has kind of gone into that realm. Previously, that wasn't something that Medicaid would touch, they didn't feel like that was appropriate. Obviously, with COVID, they had to rethink that. And that's kind of been something that's lingered, and we expect that to continue to be a part of the expansion as well. All right, well, I hope I made Medicaid a little bit interesting and exciting for everybody, but if there are any questions whatsoever, please let me know. Again, once we have officially accepted this, where we know the expansion is coming, once we know for sure that we've been accepted as a provider, I'll have a more full update for the board in regards to what exactly that expansion would be, and also map out some options in regards to staffing and resources that we could pull in at that time. But happy to answer any questions you might have at this point.
Board members? I don't have any questions, but when I heard expansion of services for students that are not on Medicaid, it was like wonderful.
Suffice it to say that made my ears perk when I was on the webinar. Okay, let's talk about that, so.
Wonderful.
Thank you all.
Madam Chair, I just like to say thank you for everybody's hard work and helping my little dream fruition here. Thank you.
Yes, I've, I've heard other things not necessarily mentioned tonight that are, are good outtakes from that, so a good partnership, thank you. Human Resources?
Okay. All right, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. The first item you have before you from HR is our current vacancy memo, excuse me, for the 2022-23 school year. Represents all the vacancies that we currently have and that we're working toward filling. Many of these, we have interviews scheduled for already, been working very actively. To date, we have hired 22 teachers, so we have been very active in the process, but this represents a snapshot of where it's pretty typical where we are during the year. But we are in June, so that gives me that, that desire to keep working even harder because that might go quickly. So we're working very hard to fill these vacancies, but I'll take any questions if you have any regarding that information.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, I don't see any bus drivers on that list. Did we get all our bus drivers?
Oh, no. No, we have not. Maybe I just left it off the list this year, maybe I was just thinking.
You holding out on us?
I am.
Getting me all excited here.
I know, that's, that's some positive thinking, but no, that, that would remain where it was, which I believe we were at five at that point, and it has not changed.
Wishful thinking.
My apologies for that.
Oh, well. Medicaid to bus drivers.
But thank you. All right, may move forward. The second memo that you have in front of you is our summary of professional staff exit data. That's something that we talked about being provided at the end of the year. So thus far, this data represents 15 respondents out of 29 exiting employees, which everyone has sent the survey, they're either sent it to their current email if they're still with us, or it is sent to their personal email if we have that once they leave us. So again, roughly half, roughly 50% of those we sent it to have responded. I just wanted to summarize some of the key indicators that we've noted here and some of the reasons, the primary reasons why people have left. I was pleased with the first indicator with 100% of the respondents indicating that they would recommend ACPS as a good place to work, despite the challenges that we all do face. Hopefully, that reflects that we are supportive in attempting to make sure that teachers have what they need while they're here. The three most prominent primary reasons you can see there for individuals leaving, personal and family considerations, health or otherwise, has continued to, to be there at the top. And again, this is a summary of the data that we have provided. Retirement at 27%. Commute and distance, 13%. So those are the top areas that we have for individuals deciding to leave, some prominent data. However, we do collect additional contributing factors in our exit survey, and some of the the highest rated contributing factors, at least this year, and I've noted that with the percentage of respondents who have indicated that. Being, you know, student discipline and behavior, we have had those discussions and how that has felt this year. Lack of support from parents and community noted, correct or incorrect, that's one that was noted by 40%. Salary continues to always typically be noted, though 27%. I feel, feel good about the efforts we've been making, that that's not a significantly high number relatively compared to the region. Poor communication between administrators and teachers at 27%, though the, the percentage from last year in that area and a few of these areas has reduced. So to make some comparisons, you know, the data in itself gives you, gives you some information about the indicators that we see, the prominence. I wanted to give a breakdown of some comparisons over last year's data. I'm not going to walk through all these because I did provide them to you, but just to note a couple of key areas, the increase from 83 to 100% of individuals who would recommend ACPS, I felt good about that. Seven percent, seven percent decrease in teachers indicating COVID or pandemic reasons as a contributing factor as the reason for leaving. That's promising. I mean, I know last year, we probably were harder hit with what was happening and having to go to a remote academy and individuals who struggled. We did have a relatively high percent indicate that, that has reduced this, this current year. Flip over. To a 20% decrease in teachers indicating they're leaving to teach in other school divisions in Virginia. That just makes me happy because I want to make sure that people that are here aren't leaving to go to our, our competitors and we do our very best to support teachers to make them want to stay here. Definitely, again, you see the increase in, in student discipline behavior as a contributing factor above last year's. And also, a 10% decrease in teachers indicating inadequate materials and resources. And the reason I noted that, even though it's a 10% decrease, is that was one that I think you all, and I think Ms. Thompson in particular, had noted is we want to make sure that's not an issue and that we're providing teachers all of the resources that they need to be successful. And, and they flow from there. 10% decrease in indication of lack of support from supervisors or poor communication between administration and teachers. Still, you saw that that was roughly at a 27% rate, but that does represent a decrease this year over last year, which I think is interesting. Lack of recognition as a contributing factor, 17% decrease. I'm kind of pointing out ones that, that I feel like are relevant and important because we want to try to make sure that we do recognize individuals, and that is always one of the factors that is noted, but we want that to not be a significant factor in all that we do. And lastly, just noting one, again, the increase that I had already noted, which was the, you know, parental and community support. You know, why that is, I don't know, but that, just some of the contributing factors that they show as increases in there. But having said that, I'll take any questions regarding, at least the summary of data that I provided tonight regarding this year's exit data.
Thank you very much for providing it.
Yes, ma'am.
Quite a lot of data there. Board members, have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Gallagher.
And I'll, I'll just end that piece by saying that, you know, we, we do use that information, so that will be shared with administration, you know, principals and so forth, so we have a good reflection of what individuals feel like when they are leaving us to help us get better, because like all surveys like that, the reason is for continuous improvement. Lastly, for me tonight, I just wanted to make you all aware that our emergency sick leave benefits for COVID-19, those will expire at the end of June. You all were gracious in approving those this year, and we approved an extended 20 days of emergency paid sick leave that individuals have used, maybe more so at different times throughout the pandemic this current school year. Those, those go away. They were only for two specific reasons essentially at this point, which was to be demonstrating symptoms and being tested for COVID or to have tested positive. And so it was during a quarantine period because of those factors. I don't necessarily recommend that we consider adopting a new policy immediately. What I would probably suggest is that we monitor the trends in the community, monitor health in the cases and how that's impacting us. And early in the fall, if we feel like something is ramping back up and we're in a place to need to do that, I think we can quickly come back before the board to consider additional supports to provide in those areas and be pretty responsive to that. But that's just my thought, but I did, I did want to make sure you're aware that that does end at the end of June, so.
Thank you. Board, do you have any other thoughts? I feel like that's a good recommendation to wait and see and monitor and be responsive when we need to.
Okay. And lastly, and it's not even on my agenda, and I'll say it anyway, I just wanted to take time because I, I share the same background as Mr. Neighbors, and I just wanted to commend, you know, Mr. Neighbors, his team, his teachers, and all the work they're doing with, with our students across the division and collaborating with all of our general teachers as well. Those indicators are fantastic, and despite the challenges we faced, I just wanted to share that because I really appreciate what they do for students each and every day, and that shows in that data because that's not easy to achieve in light of our circumstances. So, so thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Arnold?
Yes, ma'am. So I have two items. One is a budget update, and so you might, might have seen that the General Assembly, they agreed on a compromise for a budget. You also might have seen today in the paper that the, it has landed on the governor's desk, and I wanted to, so basically, I wanted to, so basically, I want to let you know how that works. So, it's landed on the governor's desk. He has now seven days to determine if there are any changes to be made. If that, if changes are to be made, then it goes back to the General Assembly for a special session. And the way the paper made it sound was that there would be changes, and so that would put the timeline probably out to about the 17th would be the quickest we could get a special session in place. Now, that's just the caveat. They agreed upon the compromised budget that was given to the governor is pretty much in line with what we presented to you guys. There are a few tweaks, and I'll go over them. We did receive less construction money. So, what they had initially, the governor had said was $2.4 million. We're receiving $2 million. But that doesn't hurt our operational budget, because that construction money was a separate one-time money, if you'll recall. So, yeah, we wish we would have gotten $2.4 million, but it doesn't impact our operational budget. We also received, outside of our operational budget, money through ARPA to give $1,000 bonuses to all of our employees next year. So, for the 2022-2023 school year, we're not positive when we're to pay that, but we believe in some of the language that maybe December 1 is when they're going to release that money to us. So, you know, a little less in that, but we're giving more to our staff, which is a good thing. So, we are at the point right now where we don't believe that there needs to be any update to our local budget. We can continue with the 6.5% raise and no increase to any healthcare. Speaking of healthcare, though, want to bring this to you. We've been working with Anthem and our consultants, because the whole goal of what we started two years ago was to get to self-funding. By getting to self-funding, we can control costs for our employees and for the county. And so, as we've discussed these options with them, they believe that it is in our favor right now to try to move towards self-funding sooner rather than later. We're still working on some numbers and what that might need to look like. Dr. Wells will have a good fortune of bringing you guys a plan in July on how that might occur, because the quicker we can get there, the better it's going to be for us, because that we can automatically drive down the costs to us and our employees. So, those are my budget updates. Any questions?
Just one for clarification. You're talking about going to self-funding sooner the better. Are you looking at possibly considering that for this year, for next budget year, or mid-year?
Yeah, the reason we would do that is because it doesn't impact the plan, right? So, the employees who take the insurance are getting the same product. What is impacted is whether or not we got to give our money to Anthem, or we keep, you know, we keep the money. So, that's an internal issue for us, and so it's more, I'm trying to think what the right word is, administrative issue, as opposed to the impact that it has on what their insurance product is and how much our employees are paying. So, that's a, I think that's a positive thing. So, any other questions about the actual, what's going on in Richmond?
Just since you mentioned insurance, just if I could just say something to Mr. Gallagher. If you could please, when we start putting the package together for the insurance, if you could include maybe a little spot to see what it would look like having those benefit cards we discussed?
Right. That particular benefit option, we'll certainly consider that as we put the plan together, because it would just be another plan option provided to them, and we'll look at the impact of that as we make this move, hopefully, you know, coming forward into self-funded.
All right. Thank you so much.
And my last item is what I've titled "Policy Discussion," but I kind of want to, I think I'm trying to assist the new superintendent moving forward, because I think that policy has become a struggle. And one, because there's so much policy that lands in front of you. And so, just to recap, main function of a school board is through policy. And right now, we're paying Virginia School Board Association a fee to keep up with changes in Virginia code to make sure that appropriate revisions are made to the policy. We then bring those to you to either approve or not approve. But what's happened recently is that when those policies are brought, some are pulled, and that's kind of in an in-between kind of gray area, and we don't know exactly what to do with them. So, like, for example, the ones that were pulled last time, we don't have any direction as to what we need to do with those moving forward. So, I think my request for Dr. Wells is that we need to have some direction on how to better deal with policy. I think it's just bogged down, and what's happening now is that we have policies that are now spread out across several months, and some of them we need to have in place to keep ourselves in line with code. And so, it's just becoming more and more problematic, and we have to have a better way of handling it. And so, my plea is to, is there a way that you guys would rather see policy handled, or would you like some options given from Dr. Wells as to how to move forward with it? Just because, you know, all of the policies that y'all dealt with last time, and how many more are out there? Yeah, there's 30 more that we've just received, and so that starts to back up, and you're going to have a backlog of these. And so, there are obviously ways that we can move that forward, but I'm open to suggestions.
Well, I'll start off. I do appreciate wanting to move them along and get them accomplished. Since it is something that is one of the most responsible things that we have to do and take care of, I do think they deserve our due diligence, and I do appreciate the board looking at them and not just rubber stamping them, but making sure that we are doing our due diligence. With that said, moving them along is important. I know I've heard several of you say, are there any on here that are vital, that we need to accomplish? And we've tried to knock those out. I do know the last group that we had, we had a list that we pulled, and we were going to receive some additional dates that we would meet to discuss those. And in lieu of not receiving those dates, and they were on tonight's agenda, I assumed that we would either discuss them tonight, or that we would set that date, since we hadn't done that.
Our intention was to let you guys discuss those tonight. But I was speaking more just in order to-
Right. So, my suggestion, recently, I don't know how other board members feel about it, but my suggestion is that if we have a group, if we have 30 more coming to us, to have a work session. You know, we had talked about having a second meeting during the month anyway, to have a work session, pull them out, have an opportunity to talk about them. I think that there's benefit that I receive when I'm reading it and I'm looking at the nuance of a change, and I question, and I'm looking at it by myself, you know, and someone next to me can shed some light on that. Hey, I checked that off my list. I'm ready to roll. So, that would be my suggestion. If you have others, or board members have others, of how we can process these more expeditiously, I'm open to that?
Madam Chair, I believe we really do need a work session. We get bogged down with so many changes coming from Richmond, and they really need to be looked over and not just rubber stamped, like you said. So, I suggest that we actually start holding meetings, maybe either during the week or on a Saturday, where we can sit down and go through all the policies.
Not a sad. Any other suggestions, thoughts?
All right. Looks like, do you have other suggestions for us to consider, or is the work session going to be our solution?
I guess it depends on when you want to do the first work session, whether it's in June or July, that'll determine who has answered that question.
Wow.
Well, that's why I put the ones for June here tonight, then after that, you can figure it out anyway. I hear y'all are going to be back here on the 16th.
We are going to be back here on the 16th. I'm not quite sure that the man of the hour is going to want to discuss policy. But if we, you know, for these tonight, do you want to discuss these tonight and get as many as we can cleared out, or do you want to just move these, I'm going to say, to July?
Madam Chair, I would, in general, move them to July. Of the many policies that had language differences, I have some emails out to VSBA, and they're legal to help us understand how the tenses impact if our policy goes to court, will the shall be seen as definitive, or is it ambiguous? So, I'd like to be able to hear back from them on that. And once we hear back, and then we'll have a better, since many of these changes have to do with that language, that would be helpful. I think one of the things that I look at is it says, in the memo, it says, "Most of these changes are in language and do not affect the school division." So, with that in mind, I think waiting until July is probably okay. If it's not, if it's just language, and it doesn't affect the school division, according to the memo, that I think waiting until July works.
Okay. If that's the board's pleasure, I would be in agreement with that, because I do appreciate you reaching out to VSBA to ask them about these changes, because we got a lot of them, that they just changed them from future tense to just present tense. And to your point that you've been making, I have been trying to do some research to educate myself, and I think there's two thoughts out there in the legal world, and one is that lawyers always use the word shall. But now, maybe they're trying to become more definitive in the present, so that shall isn't misinterpreted in court. Well, that's way beyond me. So, reaching out to the person who wrote it, as to why they changed it, and what that rationale is, could be a simple solution for us. But there are some policies that I thought did not incorporate those, that I felt like we may be able to vote on tonight. One of them was BB.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I was interested in BB, GBMA, which was omitting the option for an external review, and BDDF. And then IGBB, IGDA, and IGBA, those three were changing, pardon? Oh, okay. God bless you. Were changing the verbiage from parents to parent, and I do not think that's wise. I think both parents should have the access to the information regarding their students.
So, Board, would y'all be okay if we pulled out those six, and we talked about those and dealt with them tonight, and the rest of them that are just semantics of shall, move them to the next meeting? Is that okay? All right, so let's go with that. So, let's look at policy BB. If you've had time to look at it, we can vote, or we can make motion.
I need a motion for us to have discussion-
Madam Chair, I move we approve policy BB as presented.
Second. Okay, I have a second to approve policy BB as presented. Now, it'll be open for discussion.
Madam Chair, my problem with policy BB is it changes, it has significant challenges as it is generalizing the authority by which a school board operates. In the policy as presented, it is, it's changing it from the school board derives its authority from the Constitution of Virginia, the Code of Virginia, and the regulations of the State Board of Education of Virginia, and the state laws of Virginia. So, it's removing, it's changing it from that to, the school board derives its authority from the Constitution and the state laws of Virginia. I believe it's, that is ambiguous. And in general, when it comes to the law, ambiguity is not in the best favor of the complainant or the defendant. So, that would be my concern with that.
I'm assuming you mean the term "constitution" is ambiguous, because it doesn't clarify which constitution?
Correct. And it omits the Code of Virginia.
Okay.
It's the Constitution of Virginia. I mean, it's-
No, they struck out Virginia.
Constitution and laws of Virginia.
See, a policy, and lawyers would tell you, your policy needs to be broader rather than narrow.
Yes, you don't paint yourself into a corner.
And so, because we did call the SBA and ask about that, and that was their explanation, is that the Constitution and laws of Virginia encompass all of that. And I think it's probably good for you guys to recognize, too, that regulations of the State Board of Education are not laws that govern-
The school board.
Does that make-
Yes.
Yeah. So, that was the explanation.
Okay, any other discussion?
And thank you for that, because we've been reaching out. We haven't heard back like you have.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
What if we just struck out the regulations of the State Board of Education? So, we kept it as, the school board derives its authority from the Constitution of Virginia. No, that's it, right? No, and the Code of Virginia.
I think when you say the laws of Virginia, the Code of Virginia is the law, are the laws of Virginia, so they mean the same thing.
So, I think you could say, from the authority of the Constitution of Virginia and the laws of Virginia, if you wanted more clarity.
Just, you know, the Constitution and laws of Virginia, you assume that the Constitution of Virginia is being referenced. But if there's ambiguity there in your mind, you could say the Constitution of Virginia and the laws of Virginia. And just be explicitly clear.
The way it was explained is that these two cover the entire gamut of laws that are, that you have to uphold.
All right. Can I have, I think we had a motion on the floor that we would approve it. We had a second. Is there any further discussion? To approve the changes as they are here? Okay, so, no more discussion? How are you? I'm in a block. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So, wait a minute, we have Mr. Rossi, Mrs. Justice, Mrs. Thompson, right? And the other four, yes. Okay, motion passes. All right, let's look at policy BDDF. While we're looking, did you get a response from the SBA about the shals?
I did not.
Okay.
No, I think that was, you had sought that answer, and you haven't gotten anything back from them.
I think she reached out again this week. As we look at this one, before we have a motion, there was something that I noticed in it, let's see, in the sentence, "Upon even though all members are not be present." Let's see. Talking about the tiebreaker.
Talking about the tiebreaker. Okay, it was in the third line, so just consider it quickly. And I'm gonna read all three, all three lines. "In any case in which there is a tie vote of the school board when all members are not present, the question shall be passed by until the next meeting, when it will again be voted upon even though all members are not present." I felt like it should say, "Even though all members may not be present." As opposed to just making the assumption that at the next meeting, all the members won't be present. Now, maybe I'm reading that one wrong.
Yeah, I see that, yeah.
I agree with that, Madam Chair.
Me too.
Now, this one does have the word shall on it, and it does change the tenses. So I don't know what kind of motion you want to make, but I just wanted to bring the may piece to your attention because I thought it was just a little awkward the way it made the assumption that-
So if we change that to may, it becomes an Amherst County Public Schools policy and not a V S B A policy? Therefore, if there were litigation, we're not covering the V S B A?
Okay. Good reminder.
And what, and what you had just suggested, um, said this was, this currently is our policy as well. So that statement has been in, in place, I don't know how long it has been in place.
So I guess what you're saying is, if we're gonna change it, there could be repercussions down the road.
Sure.
So we can either accept it or not, and it may not be worth taking that risk over the word may.
I don't think, I don't think so, but, you know, and you'll, and you're, you're still waiting on the will and the shall and all that stuff anyway. So that's probably one that comes back to you.
So Board, are you okay if we just sort of push that one aside, since it's a shall? Okay, we're gonna add that to the group that moves on. All right, G B M A.
Madam Chair, in Policy G B M A, under support staff grievances, um, the complainant's right to an external hearing officer is being suggested to be changed to an impartial hearing administrator. I personally think that the external part of that is, is critical for, um, assuring the complainant that they're going to be able to have an outside perspective that is not related. It's kind of like, um, if you're having a trial in your hometown, and it's a small town, asking, "Can we have a judge from outside to look at it?"
Okay, um, any other discussion? I mean, I, I, I'm gonna say I, I agree with you. I like the, having an external person to hear grievances. I might want to know how the rest of the board feels.
Didn't we approve, we approved that list at the last meeting, didn't we? With the-
You approved the list of external hearing officers. We're in compliance with the current policy. If you change it to this one, we'll still be in compliance. If you don't change it, we'll still be in compliance, so, because they're external, they're also impartial.
I was gonna say, they, they're kind of dual, right? That's the way I looked at them, right?
Well, I mean, obviously, they had to be impartial. The ones we have selected and you approved are external, which we're comfortable with. Either way you in, indicate this, we can maintain that list, if that's our comfort, and we'll be in compliance.
Is there a motion? To approve?
I motion that we keep our current policy.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor that we keep current B, G B M A. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion before we vote? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we keep our current policy. All right, the last one is I G, can we lump these together? Of course, do we need to vote separately, since they're the same rationale for them? It was I G B B, I G D A, I G B A. And the concern was that it removed the plural parents to a singular parent, not giving, the policy not giving authority for, like, an I E P team to notify both parents. There would only be one parent. All right, seeing that there's no discussion, I'm gonna recommend that we put all three together in our vote, at least, since they have the same rationale.
Madam Chair, I move that I G B B, I G D A, and I G B A be, remain unchanged.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second on the floor, any discussion?
Is there any impact on that?
No, ultimately, the parent component there, I know the plural versus singular parent is an I D E A term. So anyone who has legal status as a parent is recognized separately. So even though, so, for example, if we're dealing with a student who has both mother and father at home, we still treat them as individual entities in regards to how the law recognizes them. They come to the meeting together, they talk together, all those decisions are made together. But anyone who has that legal status, we are required to treat as a parent under I D E A. I don't think that's kind of the root of what that was. The paragraph there that's underlined, ultimately, that's a part of every practice that we have. It's in our handbooks, it's what we do when we're talking about diploma status and how it might impact a student. So ultimately, I don't-
And you're talking about an I G B A?
An I G B A, yes ma'am. Because that would be in addition to the current policy. So if you don't, if you save the current policy, this would not be included.
So Board, are you comfortable with the explanation about the singular versus plural? Amongst a legal guardian, I mean, a legal parent?
I have one question, Madam Chair. Can you help me understand why they're changing it from the plural to the singular?
It's actually more consistent with the actual federal law itself. So looking at I D E A, um, generally speaking, parents doesn't apply, uh, doesn't occur, it's not plural, um, in the law of verbiage. I can't honestly tell you why, and I certainly don't want to go into giving legal advice, because that's not what I do. But, um, ultimately, parent is that defining word, and it's anyone that meets that status. So regardless of what the guardianship structure looks like for a student, anyone who meets that legal threshold is considered to be a parent and is eligible and we're required to communicate with to make decisions.
Madam Chair, I, I move that we approve the changes as presented.
Okay, thank you, do I have a second?
I'll have a motion on the floor to not.
To not?
Yeah.
And we were in discussion, thank you.
You need to vote on the first one.
Right.
And then make a second motion.
Move to question?
Okay, we can move to question, let's make sure that we get it right. The motion on the floor is to not approve those three. So, um-
I have a second to call a question.
Okay, second call to question. All in favor, say aye.
To call the question.
Oh, to call the question.
You gotta vote on that.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, we vote on the motion.
Okay, now the motion's on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion does not carry. Do we have a new motion?
Madam Chair, I move we presi, approve I G B A as presented.
Do you want to put all three together or just that one?
Oh, all three, oh, okay, yeah, I'm, all-
Do you want me to give you the, the numbers, the letters, I mean?
No, I'll just-
The three is presented.
Okay. Um, so the motion on the floor is to approve all three, I G B A, I G D A, I G B B, as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, I think that's all we had for the night. And then the others, once we get a response from the, uh, the word shall.
All right.
So I guess, if we're talking July, then we need to determine if we want to bring these to you at July fourteenth meeting? Or if you want to have a, schedule a second meeting in July to discuss policy?
My recommendation would be to bring these back in July. Now, if you're gonna bring thirty more to us, let's set up a work session for those thirty or something. That would be my recommendation to you guys. Okay, I think they were all in favor with doing that? Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, can we make sure we have them well enough in advance to go over them at home first?
Yes, and I believe if we do a work session, that would be-
You'll have it.
Would that be a work session or considered first read?
I don't think it has to be a first read.
Okay, so it's just a work session, then we would go to a first read at a regular meeting?
So what I presented back when we tried to start this before, was at the first meeting in the month, so July, they do get dropped in your lap as a first read. Then you come back at the second meeting in the month to work on them. And then your first regular meeting the following month becomes whether you approve it or not. So, you, you have that space in between there, and you also have all of the stuff that's on the website. You get feedback, all of those kinds of things. And just, just so y'all know, none of the ones we've put out have received any feedback in the last-
I can understand.
Three or four months, so.
Okay, that makes good sense, thank you.
So we would go ahead and think of July fourteenth as our initial, we'll give you first read July fourteenth, and then two weeks later, July twenty eighth, that Thursday, we could schedule a, a session to, uh, go through that and discuss policy at that point. And then bring it back to you in the August meeting for approval. Okay.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, that is all I have, other than to say I'd like to thank the school board for giving me the opportunity to impact the lives of children in Amherst County. And that is, as you said, the thing that I'm most passionate about, and I believe I was able to do that. And I want to just thank you as a group for providing me that opportunity. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Now we come down to committee reports and items from individual board members. Um, I guess we could do that together. Mr. Rossi, I'm gonna start off with you. Do you have a report? I know it's getting late.
Madam Chair, uh, as I don't serve on a committee, I don't think I have a report to give. I would like to, uh, say good luck, Dr. Arnold, um, moving forward with retirement. I hope to get there someday. Hopefully, uh, your impact will be felt around the county. I know you had your last graduating class, but your last class hasn't graduated. So, um, you know, the, the positive impact that you've had on those students, it, it, it's incredible to, to be a part of that, you know? I know that the teachers all impact and, and your staff here, and everybody's worked so hard to, to make things happen year after year after year, and the challenges we've been through, and, and, like I said, I, I'm, I'm new to this. And just to see how you guys go over those bridges and cross them, those waters, it, it's, it's really impressive, and it's inspiring. You know, the, the school keeps moving forward, you know, the lights go on every day, you know? And there will be teachers that come and go, you know? And, and even, you know, as, as I was a student, there are still some teachers that I remember. And, and I think all students have those teachers, you know? And, and I think your name's gonna be coming up a lot in their lives, and, and you should be very proud of that. And, uh, I wanted to thank you for that.
Ms. Justice?
Thank you, um, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you to those who spoke tonight, shared their heart. Mr. Tomlin, um, Oona McClellan, Ms. Stone, and, um, Mr. Burley. Dr. Burley, that's right. Thank you for coming and participating. I really am excited to see in the plans for our expansion in the new auditorium. I, I am particularly blessed by the toilet accommodations. I believe the single occupancy and the, um, the openness of the design will help meet safety concerns for all our students and help reduce bullying opportunities. And, um, help provide a safer, more open environment for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Burke?
Um, yes, I'd like to say thank you to everybody that took the time out to speak tonight. We had some great speakers. And also, congratulations to our archery team, always proud of our students when they go out and do well. And a special thank you to, um, Dr. Arnold for his years spent with us here. We learned a lot underneath you, and hopefully, we keep growing underneath, um, Dr. Wells. And, um, hopefully, everybody has a good summer. Thank you.
Mr. Kreiser?
Madam Chair, Gov School didn't meet, uh, but the, the up and coming juniors, uh, been having their orientation this past week. So, uh, that was kind of exciting. I'll follow them on Facebook if you don't, so, um, not that I Facebook, I stalk on my wife's account, but anyways. She likes Gov School. Uh, so anyways, that's, that's what's going on with Gov School. As I was traversing the state, I missed the initial part of this, uh, but I sincerely, sincerely wanted to thank you, Dr. Arnold. I've used the analogy several times about having to dance with seven different partners, and I, honestly, the song stunk sometimes, and it was hard to dance to, right? But I, I will, you've been a champ, I actually double took when I was walking by the table in there. I was like, who's that young guy's picture on there? You age like a president, don't you?
I already made that comment.
Yeah, and I missed that, but I, it did, it's, it's like, wow, he was young when he came here. But I, I, I wish you the best in retirement, and I can't wait to get to that V R S milestone myself. And, uh, and thank you for everything. I mean, I, I, you know, to, to deal what you've dealt with in four years, who would have thought it? I never would have thought it, coming on the board myself, so, but I'm glad I got to walk it with you, and I appreciate that.
Ms. Slegon?
Yeah, I'll be quick, I, uh, just Laurel, we attended Laurel's graduation since we were here last. We had one graduate from Amherst. Unfortunately, that particular night, the graduate wasn't able to be there, had had a death in the family, but we still had the ceremony. Mr. Gallagher was the speaker, did an awesome job representing Amherst at Laurel that night. And then, of course, our own graduation, I always enjoy being there, seeing all the young people going across the stage. Two hundred and something, right? Two eighty-four, something like that, so that was a good night. And I've enjoyed all the end of the year, uh, programs here in Amherst. Pre-K, graduated to kindergarten, and my kindergartner graduated to first grade. And my eighth grader graduated to sixth grade, so I just had a good time. But, uh, more important than me, I enjoyed the camaraderie with all the teachers and administrators. So we off, the year's over, and we made it. I'm excited, I guess summer school is kicking in, buses will roll again, um, is that right? We didn't hear about it, but they'll roll again on Monday? Wednesday? Oh, good, I can speed up the road one, two more days before buses get back out there again. And I want to thank, uh, the high school for the yearbook. I can't wait to get home, whenever I get home, and look at this. So thank you, Dr. Brown, you know, I told you, bring those yearbooks out. And, uh, so we thank Ms. Burley for remembering us again this year, I can't wait to read that. Dr. Arnold, I already told you everything I had to tell you, but I know where you live, so.
Currently.
Yeah, well, the internet is a great thing, you know? But all jokes aside, congratulations on retirement. That word retirement is, is means a lot, I guess, I don't know, everybody around me is retiring, so me, Mr. T. Dr. Wells will get you hooked up here and hitched up before you know it, so, that's all I have, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so STEM Academy, we did have a meeting, uh, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago. I think the biggest thing to note is that the Superintendent of Lynchburg City is no longer sitting on the STEM board. Uh, it'll be Dr. Wells this time, so, uh, if you hadn't heard yet, so, just to let you know. They said they'd break you in, right? So, uh, so, um, and that's really it for my, uh, my, uh, committee, committee meeting, yeah, that's- committee, committee, yeah, then. Thank you, everybody, for speaking tonight. Like I said, we need to hear from all sides of the community. The, Mr. Burley's speech for, about Dr. Arnold couldn't have been any more spot on. Thank you for all that you've done. We, we all greatly appreciate you stepping up and taking on all the challenges that you had over the last couple of years, taking them, taking the bull by the horns and just leading it, leading it where it needed to be. It was not easy for anybody. It wasn't easy for you to make the decisions. It wasn't easy for people to keep up with you. But you did a fabulous job, so. Like I said, the archery group, I don't think there's been a year since we started having archery in Amherst County schools that we haven't been represented, at least at state level. So, those kids are, they're phenomenal at what they're doing. And the, the teachers who take the time to instruct them and give them that extra encouragement is, is an awesome thing. So, amen to all of them. That's, it's just a great thing. And thanks for all the reports you guys always bring. You guys bring plenty of data to us, so. And bear with us when it comes to the policy. Let us, just give us a little bit of time. We'll, we'll get it all straight. I think that's about it. Looking forward to the changing of the guard. Dr. Wells, congratulations. Dr. Arnold, good luck taking it, sir. Thank you.
And again, graduation was just such a wonderful experience to be able to be inside in the midst of all those storms and have, you know, no masks on. And we were just back to normal. It felt good. And the kids were just being mean and shining. The team did a great job. I want to thank Kathy Stone for sharing with us tonight her heart because I think she really relayed the heart of Amherst County. You know, we always hear how, you know, we, we are a family. And, you know, families can disagree sometimes, but we come back together. And she took it and just shared and, and made us shine. So, we just need to remember that, that we all need to encourage one another. I picked up the phone the other day, and I just said, I just need to hear you laugh. And it was just so rewarding to just sit and do nothing on the phone but just hear each other laugh. So, just remember that we do have good hearts here in Amherst. I also thank Mr. Tomlin for speaking. I thought he did an eloquent job. He asked the question about discipline and asked board if we were listening. And I just want to say that we are listening. And we're, we're hearing that. And I know that that's gonna be a concerted effort this coming year. I also want to remind everyone, on the sixteenth next week, next Thursday, we will meet, I'm assuming, I think, in the administrative conference room, just on the other side of this building. And we will have a reception and ceremony signing of the contract for Dr. Wells. So, to end out, I want to say Natalia, thank you again for your service and working with us. We'll still see you around, but, you know, we will miss you. And you've done a great job. Thanks for always helping, being there to help. And Dr. Arnold, I just want to say congratulations on your retirement again. You know, I really cherish how much you value public education and how much you care for kids. And just thank you for your leadership that you've had here. And all the positive things that you are leaving. And I think Mr. Burley hit on the head, there will be a legacy there. So, thank you. We wish you the best. And Dr. Wells, looking forward to turning over the new leaf and working with you. And thank you for accepting our invitation and the challenge that we have in front of us. So, with that said, I think that, board, I appreciate you, and I appreciate all of you entertaining my phone calls and working with me and sharing with me the journey. So, we, we'll do this together. With that said, we need to, a motion to go into closed session.
Last one.
Yes.
Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 A1 and A2 of the Code of Virginia, it is recommended the board convene a closed meeting for the following. A, one to review and discuss contract for the position of superintendent, discuss organizational structure, and the items removed from the personnel report. And A2, student matters one and two.
Okay, any motion? I have a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are now in closed session.
A leader is a person that is kind to everyone. A leader is someone who encourages others to do their best.
A good leader lets everyone play what they want to play. Make their hearts grow big and hungry big.
A leader, when you have somebody, will help you do stuff.
A leader does things to make everyone feel important.
Well, a leader is someone that like tells people what to do.
A leader does their best every day.
It's something that makes all the other people follow that.
A superintendent is the person who works out for all the students in the county.
Dr. Arnold is sometimes so intelligent.
A superintendent is a person who likes working with kids and adults.
Dr. Arnold is smart and has a lot of answers.
A team player who takes, takes charge when something's wrong.
He's kind, caring, he's a good man, he's my friend. And I've known him for a long time, and he's, he's a good guy.
The man came for Kim County.
He was here to lead the division.
He got a great mission, mission!
Straight to the administration office he went. They called him Dr. Arnold, the new superintendent.
What is he about? What will he do?
He called, he called the community, "I am here for you."
He said, "No matter what, let's do what's best for students." Always making decisions with remarkable prudence.
His ideas are big and his expectation is high.
He always wants stakeholders to understand the why.
Always moving forward, he spearheaded a comprehensive plan, presented it to the community just right before COVID began.
Advocating for students with cancer, helping students build like radical strategy.
And then, of course, came the judge of chemistry. Will we lose all things academic?
He did not waste a second, everyone would agree, as he decided we will air on WSET.
So, once all this started, and we were gonna have students at home for an extended period of time, one of the, the charges that we had as a school division was trying to figure out how we were going to teach them from a distance. And obviously, if you don't have the ability to contact those students, you know, be face to face with those students, the, the next best option is online, all right? So, whether it's through a learning management system or Zoom or Google Meet, those kinds of things. But like much of rural America, our internet capability is, is limited. And so, we, we estimate that we probably have about thirty-five percent of our students that do not have high-speed, reliable internet. So, it made me start rethinking about, well, why don't we marshal the power of television? You know, you might not have internet, but most people have TV. What we're, what we're thinking now is, is that we're gonna be able to fill some space in the summer when school is technically over.
It did not stop there. He said, "Our students must have connectivity." Out went hotspots, Wi-Fi on buses, so many things, led by his creativity.
Eager to have students back, he began the roadmap to retire. It was imperative that the students would learn.
A resonant communicator and not afraid to make tough decisions.
Always forward, thinking with remarkable precision.
Videos, podcasts, and a million interviews were the norm.
It was always important to keep the community informed.
Thank you, Dr. Arnold, for all that you've created for our continued success.
Good luck on your retirement. We wish you the very best.
Remember kids, always a day they give us superintendent. Always remember, smile, be happy, and let your friends grow.